Thank you, Mayor.
Okay.
Okay, um, let me just start off by stating that we received a letter on February 24th from the chairman, Ron Green. He had resigned from the, uh, from the Board of Adjustment. And, um, you know, he did a wonderful job for the number of years that he was chairman. And when he was on the committee, we're really gonna miss him. He did a very professional job. Um, with that said, um, I'd like to see if we can get a, a, a new chairman at this time?
I can nominate Bill Henry.
Is there a second?
I second that.
Who seconded that?
Bob Foley.
Okay.
Is there any other nominees? Here or none? Um, roll call, please.
Mr. Kaczynski?
Yes.
Mr. Foley?
Yes.
Mr. Emma?
Yes.
Mr. Savili?
Yes.
Mr. Esposito?
He's emailing in. He said yes.
Okay, Ms. Cow?
He could hear us pretty well, as he says.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, um, with that, uh, I'd like to nominate a, uh, co-chair, and I'd like to nominate, uh, Dave Savili. Do we have a second?
I second that.
Any other nominees? Um, roll call, please.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. Kaczynski?
Yes.
Mr. Foley?
Yes.
Mr. Emma?
Yes.
Mr. Esposito?
He said yes.
Okay, Ms. Cow?
Yes.
Okay, at this time, um, we have three applications.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I apologize, may, um, we have to read the Open Public Meetings Act statement. You want me to read that in the record?
Oh, yes, please, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I keep forgetting to email that to you. Um, uh, this is the March 24th, 2021 meeting of the Borough of Saraville Zoning Board of Adjustment. Adequate notice this meeting, as required by the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act, also known as the Sunshine Law, has been provided by an annual notice sent to the Borough's official newspaper, posted on the bulletin board in municipal complex, and posted on the Borough website, and filed with the Borough Clerk. As this meeting is being conducted electronically, those notices have also include the Zoom dial-in information, which includes both a link to the website access, and also telephone numbers, if you wish to go use telephone only. If you're on telephone, when the time comes for the public to speak, press star nine, which will raise your hand, and it will recognize you and activate so you can speak and ask questions and make comments and applications. If you're using the website application next to your name, there's a hand raised feature, and if you click on that, we'll recognize you, and you can speak on an application. Um, that's all, Mr. Chairman, please continue.
Uh, thank you. I just wanna make a, a comment, too. Um, my name shows, Noreen Henry. My name is Bill Henry. My wife uses this often, so, uh, just to let everybody know. Um, so we have three applications tonight. Um, and, uh, I'd like to do the, uh, application 2102 and 2103 first, and then the one that was held over, the Saraville Shopping Plaza, Inc., or LLC, um, do that last. Um, hopefully these two bulk variances will go quickly. And at this time, I'd like to, um, have case number 2102, Jonathan Magaw, um, be sworn in.
Good evening, Mr. Magaw. Are you present?
Yeah, he's here.
Yeah, he raised his hand. You gotta move him over for us. Mr. Magaw, can you hear us?
He needs to unmute.
Okay.
Yep, you're good.
Good evening, Mr. Magaw.
Good evening.
Uh, I just need to swear again briefly. Please raise your right hand. You swear firm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And then give us your name and spell your last name.
Jonathan David Magaw, M-A-G-A-W.
And your address, sir.
Forty-nine Dane Street, Saraville.
Okay, and then if you would just explain in your own words, uh, what you're doing at your home, and, and why you're here with the board tonight looking for an approval, and I'll put up your, um, I will put up your, uh, site plan for you while you're doing that.
Sure. Uh, last year, during one of the major storms, my neighbor's eighty-seven foot tall tree, uh, fell through my existing garage, uh, bringing it totally down to the ground. And, uh, unfortunately, my garage, the current garage, uh, is on the property line for the most part. So, uh, the plan is to, um, with the proper setbacks, move it to the left side of the property, so it can be more easily used as a garage for a vehicle.
Okay, and can everyone see I put the plan up on the screen? Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Um, I, Jonathan, I just have one question. Where, the, the yellow part on your, on your, um, schematic there, is that gonna be concrete or asphalt?
Uh, it's concrete.
Okay. I have no other questions. Any questions from the board members?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, what are the variables?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, we have, uh, there's four variances on this. The, the garage measures twenty by twenty-four feet, which is a total of four hundred and eighty square feet, and the maximum size allowed is a hundred and fifty feet. Um, there's also a driveway extension, I think Mr. Magaw mentioned that. Um, there's a, uh, maximum building coverage for the lot of twenty percent maximums permitted. Uh, this will bring it up to twenty-six. There is a variance for, um, impervious coverage, uh, which the maximum is forty-five is permitted, and fifty is proposed. And then the driveway extension itself encroaches in the side yard setback, where a minimum of five feet is required, one foot is proposed, which seems to be kind of in line with the existing driveway. Those are the, the variances required by this application.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, if I can ask a couple of questions?
Yes, go ahead.
Um, and these are the standard questions we ask for garages. Uh, will a business be run out of this garage?
No, there will not be.
Okay, and, uh, what type of utilities would, will be provided in the garage?
Uh, just simple electric.
Okay, and there'll be no plumbing?
I'm sorry?
And no plumbing, no plumbing? Okay. And what, what are you gonna use the garage for, just so it gets on the record?
Uh, it's for my vehicle.
Okay, and then probably some, uh, yard tools and things like that, right? Lawnmower?
Yeah, your standard lawn equipment and yard equipment.
Okay, very good, thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I got a question, I got a couple of questions. The, the size of the current garage that got destroyed, what size was that? Is, I mean, on the drawing, it almost looks just a little bit smaller.
It was twenty feet by twenty-one feet.
Okay, alright. And are you designing this, or are you buying a shed, and is it gonna match the house, and stuff?
Well, the house is all brick, so, uh, this is gonna be a stick-built garage, uh, with, it's gonna have white vinyl siding.
Okay.
Any other questions? Um, I'd like to open it up to the public, if any members from the public have any questions of this application. Joan, do you see any members at all?
No, I do not.
Or, or, okay. I make a motion, close the, uh, public portion?
Second.
Okay, um, board members, what's your, uh, desire for this application?
I make the motion, we approve the application.
Second the motion.
Roll call?
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. Kaczynski?
Yes.
Mr. Savili?
Yes.
Mr. Emma?
Yes.
Mr. Esposito? Mr. Foley?
Yes.
Ms. Cow?
For the record, Tony Esposito said yes.
Okay.
Okay, you'll be able to get your permits at the, after we do the resolution at the next meeting, and, and go get your permits and start building garage after the, uh, in a month.
Thank you very much.
Okay, good luck.
Thank you.
Alright, the next, um, application is 2103. And it's, um, Anthony Copa, is he, is he there, John?
Yeah, he's there. He's got to get moved over from the attendee side.
Yeah.
Anthony, can you hear us?
Michelle?
For Michelle?
Yeah, Michelle's got herself muted. There she is. Ms. Copa, can you hear us?
I can hear you, I'm sorry.
Okay, now don't worry about it.
My new button, it does not work with me sometimes.
Yeah, still waiting for technology to make our lives easier, right? So, uh, same as the last application, please raise your right hand, I'll swear you in. You swear firm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Ms. Copa?
Is she responding?
How do I respond? I do?
Yes.
Okay, I do.
Okay, and, and give us your name, spell your last name, please?
Kuo.
Uh, we seem to lost your audio. Yeah, it's in and out.
I'm sorry, it's Kuo, okay, U-O?
No, no, that's Sherri. No, we need Ms. Copa.
Michelle Copa?
Oh, okay.
For some reason, Ms. Copa, you're, we can't hear you.
Michelle, can you hear me?
No, we still can't hear you, Ms. Copa.
Yeah, I can hear you, you don't?
Yes, yeah, try dialing on your telephone, exactly, good idea. Don't worry about it, take your time.
Michelle? Still can't hear you.
Yeah, 'cause she's probably on the, um, attendee's side.
No, she's a panelist.
Yeah, I know, but her, her microphone on her computer's not working, so she's dialing in with her telephone.
What's the number, Michelle? Is it a six oh nine number?
Try, Michelle, on your phone, hit star nine. It's, it should raise, it should raise your hand if you hit star nine, and we'll see you. There we are. Joan, you see her? It's not, it's the five four nine zero. Yep, switch her over, okay.
Still can't hear you, Michelle.
Still can't hear you, that's odd. If you're using a headset, try unplugging it sometime, maybe it's your headset.
Her phone number hasn't been brought in yet.
Yeah, that's what it is. You're right. Joan, you see it, it's the nine oh eight number that ends in five four nine zero?
Yeah, I just moved it.
No, it's still stuck on attendee's side.
Huh.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, Ms. Copa, we can hear you now. How are you this evening?
I'm so sorry. I'm good, how are you?
Don't worry about it, these, these things happen, these things happen, so don't, don't...
This is an awful lot of pressure.
Yeah, don't be frazzled, we're, we're pretty easygoing, board. So, as last time, please raise your right hand, I'll swear you in. You swear firm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Okay, you can put your hand out, and give us your name, spell your last name.
Sure, it's Michelle, and the last name is Copa, C-O-P-P-A.
And your address?
Uh, ten Sherwood Road, Harlan, New Jersey, zero eight eight five nine.
Okay, and then I'll put your, um, I'll put your survey up on the screen, so we can see it. And just, as, with the last application, just explain to the board what you're doing at your property, and why you need an approval from the board this evening.
Sure, we're looking to install a pool into our yard. Um, it's a fifteen by thirty above-ground pool. Um, and what we're looking to do is just get a variance on the distance between where the pool gets installed and the property line. So, um, my understanding is it's a ten-foot, it's typically ten-foot, we're requesting three feet, just to get it as close to the fence as possible.
Okay, yeah, and for the board members, there, there was actually two variances. Um, one for this, the rear yard setbacks, so the distance from the pool to the back property line is, uh, supposed to be ten, it will be three. And same thing for the side yard, if you're looking into the property from the street on the left side, that will also be set back three feet, where that should be ten as well. Those are the two variances involved.
Michelle?
Yes.
Yeah, I, I just have a question here, it's Bill Henry. Um, hey, uh, when I was on Google Maps, I noticed a number of trees covering your yard. I don't know if they were yours, or your neighbor's, or, so, will, will you be taking down trees to have this pool installed?
No.
Okay.
No, your order's clear. Um, our na, there's trees behind our fence, and then there's trees my neighbor to our left, I guess our right, if I'm looking, I'm looking at the house, it's to our left, they have a very large tree, um, in the yard, that covers a lot of our yard.
Okay, thank you, that's all I have. Any other members, uh, have any questions of this application? Hearing none, I'd like to open it to public. Anybody out there that would, uh, have any questions of this application? Just now, make a motion to close it to the public?
Second that.
Okay, um, board members, what's your, uh, desire in this application?
Move to approve the application.
Who was that?
That was Phil. Is there a second?
I second that, Bob Foley.
Okay, roll call?
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. Kaczynski?
Yes.
Mr. Savili?
Yes.
Mr. Emma?
Yes.
Mr. Esposito? Mr. Foley?
Yes.
Ms. Cow?
Yes.
Okay, uh, your resolution will be passed at the next meeting, and you'll be able to go out for permits at that time, and, and build your pool.
All right, great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'll contact you, Michelle.
Okay. Alright, the, um, next application is the... Saraville Shopping Plaza, LLC, um, who will be speaking for them?
Hi, Lisa John Bassa, attorney with Chiesa, Shihane, and Jantumasi, on behalf of the applicant.
Okay, thank you. Carl, do you need this, uh...
I don't think we need anything, uh, opening comments. We, um, Lisa, do we have, if we have all your folks as panelists, or whoever's needed to use screen share, are we taken care of there?
Yes, thanks, Carl, it looks like they're all present.
Okay, so, turn it over to you, Lisa.
Alright, so, good evening again. For the record, Lisa John Bassa, with the law firm Chiesa, Shihane, and Jantumasi, on behalf of the applicant, Saraville Shopping Plaza, LLC. Tonight, the applicant is seeking site plan approval, as well as use variance approval in connection with a proposed Dunkin' Donuts that it proposes to construct essentially at the corner of Ernston and Washington Road, uh, within the existing shopping plaza. The existing shopping plaza is located at two nine zero nine, Washington Road, block three six eight point zero seven, lots one and two. Uh, while the applicant is seeking use variance approval, um, it should be noted that the Dunkin' Donuts restaurant use itself is a permitted use, we are only seeking the use variance approval related to the drive-through component of that use. Additionally, we have some ancillary deviations that we are also seeking, which our professionals will address. To discuss the application tonight, we intend to call several witnesses. We have James Henry, who's our civil engineer, Nick Vertarisi, who is our traffic engineer, Gary Cleash, who's our project architect, and Justin Osilio, who is our professional planner. So, with that, if it's okay with the board, I would call our first witness?
Yes.
Okay, I see, uh, Jim on the screen.
How's it going?
Good evening, Mr. Henry, please raise your right hand. You swear firm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Lisa?
If you could, uh, briefly say your educational and professional background for the board?
Sure, I'm a licensed professional engineer in New Jersey, Pennsylvania, and New York. I'm a licensed professional planner in New Jersey. I was licensed by test, and a bachelor's of science from Rutgers University, with a minor in public planning, and a master's in civil engineering from Rutgers University as well. As far as work experience, I've over fifteen years, uh, working at Dynamic Engineering, and a principal of the firm, and I've been accepted as an expert in the field of civil engineering by over seventy municipalities in New Jersey. In particular, I've worked on over fifty quick-serve restaurants, also known as QSRs, uh, throughout my career.
And your license is current, Jim? I ask that you be accepted as an expert in civil engineering?
Mr. Chairman, will accept this qualifications?
Thank you. Alright, I'm just gonna share my screen.
Great, and Jim, you were the preparer of the site plans that were submitted to the board in advance of tonight's hearing, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
I believe some of these exhibits have been pre-marked, so, um, let me know if there's any issues. I'm just gonna go to... I'm referencing the aerial map exhibit, uh, that was prepared by Dynamic Engineering, and that's exhibit A five, I believe, and that was last revised... Like, any luck with this, zoom in, be direct? It was last revised... Where the PDAB is messing with me here. Uh, that was last revised February 24th, 2021. It's just a colorized version of what was submitted to the board, I believe on sheet two, of the site plan set. Um, as Ms. John Bassa had mentioned, uh, the parcel ID is known as Block three sixty-eight point oh seven, lots one and two. Location is two nine oh nine, Washington Road, County Route five thirty-five, uh, the corner of, uh, basically the corner of Washington and North Ernston Road, which is also a county road. The parcel size is, uh, twenty-three acres, twenty-three point seven acres, and it's located within the B two PUD zone. Um, as far as the existing uses on-site, there's an existing shopping center, it has several, uh, different uses within the shopping center, including a shop right, uh, daycare, and a dialysis center as well. Uh, and multiple permitted uses are, are permitted within the zone. As far as adjacent uses, uh, there is a Shell gasoline station, uh, directly diagonal from the site, at the southwestern corner. Uh, there's a park across the street, there's Washington Road to the south, was residential beyond, and then there's residential, uh, to the north and east of the site.
And directly across on Ernston, there's also a, a bank.
The bank as well, I'm sorry, yeah.
Thank you.
Uh, as far as existing conditions, I'm just gonna reference, um, site plan exhibit, or the survey real quick. This survey was prepared by Maser Consulting, was submitted as part of, uh, the application. Uh, this is marked as exhibit A three. Uh, it's a boundary and topographic survey prepared by Maser Consulting. Uh, and this, this survey basically just outlines, uh, the shopping center, uh, the, the recent expansion of the shop right, as well as, um, you know, the, the existing shopping center itself. There was previously a, a, as part of the previous approvals, there was a, a, a commercial building at the intersection of Washington and North Ernston Road, and that's generally the location that we're gonna be proposing, uh, the Dunkin' Donuts. Um, as far as access, there is a full-access driveway in North Ernston Road, another full-access driveway, uh, at the northeastern corner of the site, or northwestern corner of the site, there's a driveway on Jackson Avenue, um, and that's a summary of the existing driveways, I believe all those are full movement. Uh, the topography generally is pretty flat across the site. Uh, it's kind of unique, it has some unique topographic conditions. Um, Washington Road, as many of you know, just from, you know, obviously, living in town, um, you know, there's a pretty big drop along the, the frontage of the property along Washington Road, you know, it probably drops around twenty feet, uh, between the, the southeastern corner and the southwestern corner of the site, and you can see it when you stand on-site. So, there's a pretty big grade differential, and, and really, uh, poor visibility of the existing shopping center as you travel on Washington Road. Along Nor, North Ernston Road, you know, the, the topography is generally fairly flat, uh, and it will remain, you know, obviously, it'll remain that way under the, uh, proposed conditions, so, um, but the visibility in general from the intersection, the main intersection at Ernston and Washington Road is, is fairly poor, and I just kinda wanna go into that a little bit, and show a, a site photo exhibit. Just, so the site photo exhibit is A thirteen, uh, this is your existing site photo exhibit prepared by Dynamic Engineering, dated February 24th, 2021. Uh, and we, we, our, our office took these photos, and as you can see, at the top right-hand corner of the, uh, of the photo exhibit, there's a photo basically at the intersection looking into the site. Uh, there is an existing, uh, monument sign underneath the evergreen trees, there's fairly large evergreen trees, and there's also a line of, you know, fairly dense bushes that run along Washington, uh, road. So, um, the visibility is not great from the intersection, and that's one of the reasons we're gonna be proposing a freestanding sign, but I just kinda wanted to go over, you know, there are, uh, some visibility aspects, and obviously, you know, retail is struggling in the current COVID climate, um, so, you know, the applicant is requesting a sign, due to, you know, one of the reasons being, uh, the poor visibility of the site, and, and generally speaking, the distance of the shopping center from the intersection and from Washington Road in general, so...
Are you get, are you getting rid of those bushes and trees?
No, we're not, we're actually keeping them.
Okay.
Jim, while you're on this, uh, slide, the, I guess, on the lower left-hand, uh, picture, that's a, a picture of where the proposed Dunkin' Donuts is, um, going?
Right, you're almost, the bottom left-hand corner of this exhibit of A thirteen, uh, is basically, you're almost standing on the pad site and looking at Washington Road. So, you can just generally see how much higher, uh, the roadway is than the pad site itself. Uh, there is pretty significant topographic conditions.
Right, so, so the visibility of that Dunkin' Donuts from, uh, Washington Road would be, um, minimal, is that correct?
Correct. And, and the other thing, the other thing to note is, is obviously, if you're gonna, you know, just kinda go, going back referencing the, uh, the aerial... You know, you, you have a pretty, pretty long frontage along Washington Road, and really, the only way to enter is to turn on Ernston Road. So, obviously, if you're coming from the, from the, from the west, you have to make that decision at the intersection about whether or not you're gonna make a left. If you go through that intersection, and then as you're passing by, you see something you wanna go into, whether it be the Dunkin' Donuts, or something else in the center, um, you know, really, you're gonna have to do a U-turn, and kinda pull back, and go back to the intersection, you know, I imagine most people won't know that there's a driveway on Jackson Avenue, um, which, again, is just kind of another reason you might wanna, you know, one of the reasons... Which again, is just kind of another reason you might wanna, you know, one of the reasons we're proposing a sign at the intersection that's not there today.
I see a question from a board member, whether we have a sketch of the sign we're proposing, if we could address that a little bit later on in Mr. Henry's testimony. Jim, if you could discuss the actual site layout of the Dunkin Donuts at this point?
Could I ask a quick question? I know Mr. Foley asked it before a little bit, the current sign. Wouldn't that, wouldn't you want to like clean that up a little bit from the standpoint of the trees and making it maybe a little bit more accessible from the site standpoint?
So what we did was we actually elevated the sign above the shrubs so that we didn't have to impact any of the existing vegetation. So we have, you know, a good amount of clearance underneath the sign and then the sign is basically consistent with the, you know, shopping center. Use, it's not, I wouldn't call it overly large and our traffic engineer will get into the justifications on some of the. The, the height of the lettering, but you know, I would say it's comparable to the Walgreens center that's just up the road. As far as size for a shopping center.
My, my question was like, the current sign upstairs. It just shows it's the plaza. Like, clean that up?
Yeah, Mr. Henry, actually, there was a comment within your board's planning review letter which asked if the applicant would be removing that monument sign out the corner and if that is something that the board is inclined for us to do, we would. We would remove that monument sign because it only just identifies the center as a whole and the proposal is to replace it. With a freestanding sign that would have several panels on it identifying the various tenants within the. Within the shopping center. And, you know, for the reasons stated, it, we believe and I'll go into further detail that, you know, the visibility. Would be greater from both a traffic and safety standpoint if there was that higher freestanding sign, we're proposing it at, I believe, twenty-two feet.
Yeah, I just wondered if you just took those trees down if it would be, you know, more visible at that point.
So are you, so are you taking down the old sign, is that up, that's up for discussion?
That's up for discussion, we were proposing to remove that sign.
Okay, okay, and that's okay with the folks that own, own that, own that area? Is that, is that sign on the land that you guys are taking? Or is it, is it common to the shopping center?
So I'm just gonna reference the aerial over, the aerial map overlay, which.
Jim, I apologize to interrupt you, Mr. Foley and other board members too, I know everyone. Has been focusing on that, that there's a Dunkin Donuts being constructed here, but the applicant is actually the shopping center owner. And, and they're asking permission from the board to install a Dunkin Donuts. And then the addition is the sign and the sign is, is, we'll get to the, to the point where they'll put the copy of what they're proposing for the sign up. So the sign really benefits the entire center and would have all the tenants in there, the food store, the other tenants as well as the Dunkin Donuts, so. Again, I know we focus on the Dunkin Donuts because that's the main building going up, but this is really an application. By the property owner for multiple improvements to the property, so I don't know if that helps put it in a context, I mean, there's still lots of questions and issues about. You know, all matters of things in the application, but just to put that in a context for you, sorry to interrupt you, Mr. Henry, but I just thought that might help clear things up.
No, it's fine.
And that, and that is accurate, thank you.
Just kinda show where, where that sign is going, we have it up towards Washington, basically perpendicular to Washington. And that's shown on our overall site plan sheet that we have on the site plan set. So that's located just along Washington. So, just getting to the, the overall center itself, the overall center is compliant on parking. As I mentioned earlier, we're proposing the Dunkin Donuts approximately twenty-five hundred square feet and has a total of twenty-one seats. Just gonna pull up the color rendering. Sorry, my PDF is not moving fast today. So we're proposing a twenty-five, two thousand five hundred forty-four square foot Dunkin Donuts with drive-through. As Ms. John Bass had mentioned earlier, the restaurant itself is permitted, but the drive-through is not permitted, which is why we're at the Board of Adjustment tonight. From a parking perspective, we are compliant, we are compliant with the parking. The overall shopping center is compliant and the Dunkin requires twenty spaces and we propose twenty spaces as part of this application. Overall, the, the parking stall size is compliant, it's a sixty degree, sixty degree angle parking throughout the site, which is compliant with your ordinance. If there, we have a six and a half foot sidewalk basically along the front of the parking, of the building. To allow for pedestrians to get out of their car and walk into the main entrance, which is located at the northwestern corner of the site. There's hairpin striping proposed, which is consistent with your, your ordinance. And the parking setback is, is five feet from the property line, which complies. The, the parking setback from the, from the property line is, is required to be fifty feet. We are proposing twenty-five feet and that's mainly because we have an existing conditions. We have an existing shopping center, existing shopping drive aisle. Where we're trying to align everything and make everything fit nicely within this, in this pad area. So we're kinda pushed a little bit closer than we typically would want. Towards, towards the front of the property, we are staying away from Washington, which I think is a nice, you know, maintained lawn, so that is being maintained. But it's very similar to the, you know, in front of the, the shop right, there is a, basically a basin along this frontage. Which, you know, obviously is disturbance along, along that buffer, so. We're proposing a twenty-five foot setback, you know, overall, I think, you know, it's about, you know, roughly about forty-five feet, forty feet from the, the actual. Curb line, so it's, you know, I think it generally meets the intent of what we're looking to do as far as provide a nice landscape trip, strip between the, the pad site and North Ernston Road. We're also asking for a waiver within the front yard setback, again, similarly, it's also. You know, just because of how the, the site is oriented and this particular site is oriented. I think it's, you know, we're basically trying to stay out of the existing parking field. And keep the pad site almost as a standalone pad site and not impact the overall circulation patterns within the shopping center. From an access perspective.
The setbacks that you were just talking about, you're talking about the building setback?
The parking setbacks. So the parking, parking setback, I think it was twenty-five feet is, is proposed and fifty feet is required.
Right, and you said from a visibility standpoint, from the actual curb line, it's setback almost forty-five feet, so therefore visually it is, is virtually meeting the requirements of the code, is that correct?
Correct, roughly, I'd have to measure it exactly to get the exact number, but probably right around forty, forty-five feet, yeah. Continuing on, the access basically is gonna be maintained as part of this application, one thing we were looking to do is basically restripe. So you would have a right, right out only lane and then also a left out only. Our traffic engineer will get into the specific improvements that we're proposing. But I think this is gonna go a long way in, in improving circulation of this particular driveway. So if you have somebody that's gonna be making a left, everyone that's making a right isn't kinda held up by, by the person making the left, so. What we did, we did basically meet with our traffic engineer, met with the police department as far as, you know, some pedestrian concern and our traffic engineer will go into that. Some of the improvements that we're looking to do is we're adding advanced pedestrian warning signs in both directions on Ernston Road. We're upgrading the crosswalk across Ernston Road at the subject driveway to provide high visibility crosswalk. Providing crosswalk across the subject site, which isn't there today, so that's, that crosswalk right here isn't there. We're providing pedestrian access into the Dunkin Donuts site. And then also we're adding no parking signage along. No parking signage along, in front of the subject driveway. We're also gonna be, already previously mentioned, we're restriping the driveway, dedicated left, dedicated right. And we're providing stop bars internally to help improve general circulation within the existing center. So that's just a quick summary of some of the improvements that we're doing from a traffic perspective and a pedestrian perspective to help improve the overall circulation, both from a. Traffic safety and then also from a pedestrian safety and our traffic engineer will probably go into that a little bit more in detail. But being that they are site elements, I just kinda wanted to bring them up to the board so they are aware that we are taking steps to help improve the situation. The other thing we did review from a circulation standpoint and from an access standpoint was the possibility of trying to add an additional access on Washington. And I'll go back to the survey, which was prepared by Mazer. So as you can see, I mean, you can't see that much, but you can see in the aerial, basically there's, there's a right hand turn lane along Washington and it's actually a fairly long right hand turn lane. Which actually takes up most of the frontage along Washington Road. As far as locating a new driveway here, you'd really want it outside of the right hand turn lane. So in, in talking to Mr. Cornell, you know, we did review the possibility of trying to add a driveway here, the problem is, is that you have to pull the driveway so far from the intersection. So it doesn't conflict with the right hand turn lane, that it would need to kinda be in the middle of the site. And when you get to the middle of the site, there's, there's roughly about a fifteen foot grade differential between the. The access aisle and the roadway itself, which obviously is problematic. So we did review possibly adding that, but at this point, just because of the grade differential and the unique topographic conditions, I don't think that's really an option at this time. As far as onsite circulation, again, going back to the Dunkin Donuts plan.
Jim, can I get you to go back a second?
Go back to which one?
That right. Turn lane, you said on Washington Road?
Yes.
There's really not a right hand turn lane, is that the shoulder? There's no long stretch of a right turn lane, that's a shoulder.
I'll zoom in so you can see it. So this area right here is a right hand turn lane.
Oh, I don't think that's accurate, I'm not sure.
This is your maps image that was taken within the last sixty days of the striping on Washington Road.
Okay, I'll have to ask Jay that later.
It goes to a shoulder to a right hand turn lane.
Right, but the right hand turn lane's not the whole length, it's only about twenty feet.
It's about halfway, yeah, it's about halfway.
Right, okay.
No, it's definitely, just to clarify, it's, yeah, it's about halfway down the property, which at this point, which is basically where, where it, where it ends. That's where there's a pretty significant topographic separation there between this drive aisle. And we looked at it and, you know, in trying to get the drive aisle to work, you know, we were looking at something that close to like a twenty-five percent slope. Which obviously, you know, Jay will tell you that, you know, generally you want between like seven and ten percent at maximum for, for a driveway slope, so. So we really thought it was, you know, a little, you know, way higher than what probably would be allowed by the, by the town.
Okay.
Alright, so again, just going to, again referencing the site plan rendering. And that's due to twenty-four, two thousand twenty-one. From a circulation standpoint, we have one-way circulation as you come in, you basically make a right into the, into the pad site, it's one-way, one-way circulation. You travel around, as you travel around, there's basically three options. There's one way where you can bypass around the back of the, of the Dunkin Donuts. There's a second where you can go in a mobile bypass lane. And the third is where you can go into a drive-through lane, which is more traditional, where you order at a traditional menu board. And I'll, I'll go into that in a little bit as far as the drive-through circulation, so. We basically, we're providing a twenty foot aisle around, mostly around the building, fourteen foot at the bottom, along the southerly property line. And then the drive-through lanes on the right hand side, there's a ten foot bypass and there's a ten foot drive-through lane. As I mentioned, there's, there's three different options. The one is traditional, the other, the second, the kind of the middle bypass is, is for mobile orders, so you wouldn't need to go to a, a menu board. And the third way is just kinda, if you were gonna exit, if you parked and then you wanted to exit and you didn't have to, you didn't wanna wait in the drive-through lane. So there's three different lanes we're proposing, this is part of the new Dunkin rollout as far as improving.
That mobile, that, that mobile lane? So you're saying that's a pickup only? And then what do they do, merge, merge back in and exit?
Exactly, so, zoom in a little bit here, so we can see it. So there's, there's gonna be a clearance bar and on the clearance bar, it's gonna indicate state of the left if you wanna do, you know, just traditional ordering. Go in the middle for a mobile bypass, so what you would do is, there's someone ordering here and there's no car here, you basically would pull around. And pull right in, or if there's two cars stacked here, you basically would alternate getting into that, that fourth car position. And Dunkin Donuts basically is saying, you know, during the pandemic and, 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 you know, we work on a number of different Dunkin Donuts throughout New Jersey. They're saying somewhere close to like twenty or thirty percent of their orders now are with a mobile order, in order to cut down on, on drive. You know, basically, drive-through times, because drive-throughs obviously are more demand during, during the pandemic. And the twenty or thirty percent, you know, depending on what kind of store it is, there's people that run in, obviously order on their phone and they just go in and just pick it up. Or if you have this option where you can stay in your car, they have the option of basically coming through and just going through the mobile bypass.
Okay.
As far as the number of queuing positions, there's a total of ten cars designated in the queuing at one time. They're really spaced out quite a bit, more generously than we typically do this. This is how, this is how Dunkin basically aligns their, their drive-through with their cars. As I mentioned, there's a clearance bar up here, there's a preview board and there's also the menu board. And then as far as the, this is sort of a next generation of the, of the design of Dunkin's where the first. Or basically the first drive-through window is gonna be for your traditional orders. And your, they call it a fast forward window, is gonna be for your mobile orders. So if one of these cars is a mobile order, they're not gonna serve them out of this window, they're gonna say pull up to the fast forward window. And then they're able to be served and then they pull off site, so. There basically will be two different drive-through windows, which will be serving customers to help improve efficiency. James?
Alright, I'm not, I'm like, I'm like, now, now I'm not getting the mobile thing. So go, go back to the bottom of the page where the mobile lane is. So what is that, that person there in that mobile lane, what, what are they doing? They're just merging around? They're not doing any ordering or anything?
Yeah, all they're doing is merging in here and there's flexible ballers along the edge of the concrete to basically force the merge. So then, then the person gets in the lane here, pulls forward, there's only one, basically one lane of both the mobile orders and the traditional orders. And then the mobile order is served out of this window and the traditional order is served out of the regular drive-through window.
James, this, Bill Henry? So if someone's at the traditional window and you have a mobile order person behind, they'll have to go around them to get to the other window?
No, they would wait in the line until, and then if, but if they were a mobile order, they wouldn't go to this window, they would pull forward as fast forward window. So they, they wouldn't, they would just pull forward in the, in this.
After the car in front of them left?
Right.
Yes, okay.
You know, it, you know, it throws this drawing off is you, you got about ten cars. That are waiting to pick up their order. And what about the people that are placing the order, because it looks like, what does ten cars look like jamming up that parking lot on that side?
Yeah, our, our traffic engineer is gonna get into the operation as far as the stacking and how adequate it is and kinda go over that whole thing, but from a site perspective, I just kinda wanted to bring it up and how it operates. So that everyone is on the same page and our traffic engineer is gonna get into the, you know, the adequacy of the stacking and all that, so.
And who, who would be the one to talk about the accessibility from the park across the street, because. That was brought up in our planner's report as far as the ease, because, you know, something like this will draw activity from the park. But I don't see any markings in Ernston Road to make sure that those people are safe.
So, the, I think I mentioned this earlier, it might not have picked up.
Oh, there it is, up, up top, I got it.
Yeah, we're gonna be doing a new crosswalk here with a high visibility crosswalk striping. And our traffic engineer can kinda go into the, because he did talk to. The police department about these improvements and worked with them on, on, on those comments, but he worked with them directly, so I'd like him to testify to that.
And then one more thing and I'll, I'll let you go on, the exit, I thought I saw another drawing where you're gonna have. Somebody's, you're gonna be able to make a right turn out, that that's not gonna be just an enter.
That's true, so that's the next thing I was gonna talk about, so. You know, Mr. Cornell, you know, after we submitted plans and did this rendering, Mr. Cornell brought up a good suggestion and we agree with him. Which is our alternative site plan exhibit, the only real change on this plan, of course the render plan, and I didn't wanna show it because obviously it's black and white, it doesn't look as nice. This is twenty-four feet wide, which will allow, instead of forcing the cars to make a left and go through the one way and kinda circulate back around, kinda make it. What this allows is just allow the cars to come out of the drive-through and just kinda make a turn right here. Kinda makes it, you know, less activity kinda in front of Dunkin Donuts and through the drive-through.
Oh yeah, because somebody had to drive around twice.
Right. So I, you know, it was a great suggestion and we went with that. It just, you know, obviously just shortens his landscape island a little bit, but I, I think overall it works really well. The only cars that are going to be using that are really coming out of the drive through. Because if you, if you honestly, if you're coming through and you're using the bypass, this, this bypass lane is going to be rarely used. So this bypass, you know, if you're coming through and you're trying to exit the site, most likely you're probably just going to exit out this way. Drive out and then, you know, go out this driveway. You're most likely not going to circulate through here and then, you know, kind of do that movement. At least I wouldn't. You know, so that, that just provides an additional, you know, area for these cars to maneuver in this, you know, adjacent to the building.
I have a quick question.
Sure.
Can we go back to the crosswalk?
Yes.
So as, as Mr. Foley was saying, when people come out of the park. I, I don't see anyone coming out of the park, walking north to go through that crosswalk. They're going to go south right to the Dunkin Donuts. Is it, can we add those stripes on the other side of the intersection?
I'll let our traffic engineer kind of go into that and fuck, you know, let him talk about the reasoning as far as why he put it where it is. Uh, because I know he did work with your, your police department as far as the location.
Well, I can see people coming out of the park, going to shop right. Going through that part of the, but when the Dunkin Donuts is there, there's no way they're coming out, walking north to come back.
So you're saying up here and then go this way?
Yeah, there's no way they're doing it.
Cross right here, which is kind of right in the road or
Yeah, they're going to, yeah.
Okay. That's worth, worth uh our traffic engineer looking at. So he'll, he'll look at that probably while I'm talking and get back to you when he, when he testifies.
Okay.
As far as hours operation, one great thing about Dunkin Donuts compared to a lot of other QSRs is that they're not 24 hours. Um, the hours operation are 5:00 AM to 10:00 PM. Um, the maximum employees per shift are generally about six employees. Uh, for this type of site, it's, you know, it's a smaller site. There's just going to be box truck deliveries. Box trucks usually come about one time per week for dry goods. Then you have a, a donut drop off in the morning uh for fresh donuts. So um, you know, at maximum, you're going to have two box truck deliveries, but generally you'll have about one truck, box truck delivery a day. Uh, which is minimal. There won't be tractor trailers on site.
Jim, with respect to the um deliveries, we are requesting a variance not to provide a loading space?
Yes, because generally speaking, you know, uh Dunkin Donuts, as you're aware, peaks during the, the morning hours. Um, you know, you, you would imagine during the afternoon hours, most of these parking stalls are going to be empty. Uh, we really thought it was best and most efficient to basically not to have a loading zone, being that they do use box truck deliveries. Then also the, the, the donut delivery, which is the daily delivery generally come, you know, early in the morning. So usually there's not a lot of parking. Uh, you know, there's not a lot of issues with parking at that time.
Can I add something to that? Uh, talking about deliveries? Uh, what about the weekend? Weekends are also peak times. Do they have deliveries over the weekend?
Yeah, I mean, it's a daily, it's a daily donut delivery. So they'll have a donut, a delivery, you know, early in the morning. Um, you know, so they would have the donut delivery, but the dry good delivery would be one time per week.
And the six employees that you're talking about, is that's just an average?
No, that's your peak.
That's a peak?
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, as far as trash enclosure, uh, we're proposing a trash enclosure at the uh south eastern corner of the site. The trash enclosure will also have a generator within it. Uh, it's going to be a masonry trash, trash enclosure. It won't be just, you know, fenced in. It'll be high end. Uh, in addition to that, we're going to landscape the outside of it. Uh, the generator itself will serve the Dunkin Donuts. I know there's already a generator on site for the DeVita. Um, and this one will probably be gas powered. I imagine the DeVita one is probably diesel. Um, but this one will be a gas powered.
That generator is only for emergency purposes, correct?
It's only for emergency purposes, exactly.
Gas, gasoline or natural gas?
Natural gas.
Okay.
And then um so here, as far as uh garbage, garbage is expected to be picked up twice a week. Recycling is once a week. Uh, the menu board sound, uh, I know there's sometimes this concern about that. Uh, so the menu board sound at Dunkin Donuts basically adjusts to ambient sound. So uh generally speaking, the sound is, 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 you know, on the lower end of things, it's, it's the high end type of receiver. So it does basically adjust for uh the noise outside and uh we're not anticipating it to have any issues with adjacent uses and we're going to be compliant with the state noise requirements.
And Jim, aside from the controls that are implemented with the speaker system, there's also when we talked about that, that grading differential, would that grading differential act as a natural sound barrier as well?
Right, yeah. So obviously, you know, where the Dunkin is located, it's not really adjacent to the uh residential uses, which is good. Um, you know, obviously the closest is across Washington. And this site sits much lower, so you really wouldn't anticipate, you know, it's set back pretty significantly from Washington, but in addition to that, there's also a grade differential, trees, et cetera. Uh, so really you don't, you wouldn't anticipate any sort of impact.
Thank you.
And then I think we already talked about sidewalks, but we're basically providing pedestrian access. I believe there was a comment as far as asking us to add a bike rack and I, I believe uh the applicant will be agreeable to do that. Well, from a bulk variance standpoint. Uh, you know, there are a few, few existing variances. Uh, the minimum front yard setback along North Ernston Road. Uh, that's an existing, it's an existing variance. Dunkin Donuts also has a variance for that, uh, but the uh shop rate is actually closer than the Dunkin Donuts north, North Ernston Road. Um, and then also there's a, there's an uh existing buffer basically along Washington. Down towards the daycare area uh where, where the, the drive aisle goes within the 50 foot buffer. From a lighting perspective, uh, we generally try to provide safe lighting, um LED lighting, state of the art. We have them mounted at 25 feet, uh, which is compliant with the ordinance requirement. I believe there was a comment in the review letter about the height of the, of the light fixtures. And at that time, we were just going to match the existing shopping center, but obviously talking to our client, we're willing to go down to 25 feet and be compliant with the ordinance requirement. And then we're also proposing two wall mounted fixtures. Uh, we are also going to be relying on uh three existing single headed uh LED lights that are in the, in the existing parking lot to illuminate um, I guess the east side of the building. And we're, so relying on some of the existing uh lighting that's out there already. We are requesting a waiver because in some areas we have less than one foot candles. We tried to basically illuminate the parking area to have 0.5 foot candles. Which is lower than the ordinance standard. Obviously we realize that this is a residential area and we're trying to you know, basically uh fit in with the character of the neighborhood and, and not overly illuminate the site. So we think 0.5 is um, you know, enough to basically illuminate the parking area here.
Let me have a question. Uh, John Barry, um, did you have a question on the lighting uh around the Dunkin Donuts?
Some of the uh the pedestrian access to the property may have evolved. Is there any lighting proposed along the sidewalks um to the south of the Dunkin Donuts there?
Uh, yes, there, there's a sidewalk proposed to the south here. We weren't proposing any illumination. If, if, if the board would like, I'm sure, you know, the applicant would agree to add a, you know, a light down there. Um, but I, I would anticipate this sidewalk to be minimally used. Uh, we did provide illumination, you know, on this sidewalk was really uh, you know, is probably the main access point to the Dunkin Donuts.
Right. And there, is it, is it correct that there's a street light out there that's not modeled on the plan?
Yeah, street light.
So there's, there is more light than, than
There's also a street light down here that's not modeled here.
Um, I leave it up to the board if they think that that secondary pedestrian access is important to have illuminated. Um, considering that, that is a little bit closer to the residences. Maybe some lower bollards or something, just to give it a little bit of light. So it's not completely pitch black out there. It might make sense. Um, I'm not sure what you think, Mr. Henry.
No, I usually, I know you had some concern about the lighting there. Yeah, I think the um lighting coming from the streetlights and uh some of the other lighting from the Dunkin Donuts might be enough.
You know, just on another note, I mean, that, that, that sidewalk that's closer to Washington. That, you know, in anticipation of the high school, the kids will be using that. And when you think about like the winter time and stuff like that, it's dark. And they're still at school. I mean, they're doing, you know, football practice, basketball games. So I, I think that should have some defined lighting as much as that other one had.
The, the other thing is that the sidewalk, the only reason we maintain it is because it was there before, but it kind of leads to nowhere. I mean, it just leads to a drive aisle back here. I would imagine most people who are coming in here would probably use this drive, you know, this sidewalk. Which then goes to the shop right or the sidewalk that goes directly to the Dunkin.
Not, not the kids coming over from the high school.
You don't think it would, it would just cross right here and then head, head over that way or kind of cut through?
No, they, I, I think the kids would come out, come out of the high school and just walk down Washington Road to to Ernston.
Go through the center.
That's correct.
Not going through the, they're not going to go through the park.
Okay.
Is the existing sidewalk, does that have lighting?
The existing sidewalk does not, does not have lighting out there today.
So we're really not changing, not changing anything in terms of that sidewalk, except making it a little squared off. So uh the existing one doesn't have any, maybe the uh, the new one doesn't really need any.
Well, the, the existing one didn't need, doesn't need any because there was nothing there. There's nothing to draw people there. That's what my point was. Now you got a Dunkin Donuts and
Okay, it is a shorter route.
Yeah, I could, I could talk to my client about adding some lighting. I mean, if you wouldn't mind, I'll just talk to my client and if we can revisit that, that towards the end.
Ms, Mr. Henry, could you explain that sidewalk that we're talking about now? What is it that you make the turn? What is that thing that causes that right there? The, you know, what's right above you there? What's?
That's an inlet.
No, I'm talking about, you know, a little bit to that area there. What is that area?
This is just, this actually is going to be an infiltration basin. So it's going to be, you know, recess into the ground. So we'll have a fence going around the outside. It's just a basin.
Okay.
Uh, getting back to the sidewalks. Can you, can you uh provide a very short sidewalk from the Washington, uh, excuse me, the Ernston Road sidewalk directly to Dunkin Donuts, maybe like through the parking lot? Uh, you know, like
Yeah, we have one proposed here. Is that is that okay?
Well, maybe a little bit further uh south. Because if someone's walking from Washington Road or they're kind of going the long way and they're probably going to cut through.
Saying they're left, little, down here. Yeah, I mean, um yeah, I could discuss that with Mike. The only one thing, the one thing is that we, we probably want to discourage people crossing over the drive through area. Uh, that's probably not
About the drive, I'm talking from North Ernston Road, right there. Yeah, a little bit
Like right here?
Further. Yeah.
Yeah, it, it unfortunately that the basin pushes up pretty, and this is guide rail that goes around the basin. There, there's just not enough room right, right in this general area. Um so I don't know if there's a, there's a good option there. I mean, we could move this over a little bit if you wanted to. But I think that's probably the best location for it. I know it's a little bit out of the way, but it's probably the safest location.
Okay, thank you.
Jim, if I may, that sidewalk you were just talking about closer to Washington, that's there now?
This sidewalk's here, yeah.
No, the one that, if you go down the one, yeah, that's already there that goes into the parking lot?
I'll show you on the aerial. Hold on, I'm saying. Kind of a see it right here. See it?
Okay. And now, okay. I never even knew that was there.
Yeah, it, it kind of, you could see in the overall center, it kind of like
Goes nowhere.
Yeah, it's, 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 I mean, I don't get me wrong, if you're probably going over here. Maybe if you're, you're, you're going, you're going, trying to get behind, if you're trying to go this way and maybe live behind here, maybe you go behind the the center and then you go to your house this way from, from high school. Maybe you go that way, but I mean, it, it looks like it goes nowhere, but it all depends on the, the travel patterns of kids and so on, so. I got, I got, our traffic engineer obviously, you know, went into the, you know, reviewed this and uh so he can kind of go into, you know, the pedestrian circulation a little bit more in detail. Sorry, give me one second. I gotta zoom out in order to switch sheets. All right. All right. So just getting back to the, and then from a landscaping standpoint, uh, overall, uh, basically our philosophy is to use varying colors, textures and heights. Soften uh the overall development. And what we tried to do here was basically provide, you know, some nice shrubs around the outside of the site. Basically block headlights from, you know, any cars on Ernston Road. And also any cars, you know, in the, kind of the main drive aisle. In addition to that, we also tried to add uh some nice street trees along the road and then street trees along the main drive aisle as you pull in. Uh, so we were able to add, you know, several trees there. I know um as far as it's kind of a balancing act when we're doing landscaping as far as you know, trying to make it look aesthetically pleasing. And then also trying to make sure that there is some visibility. You know, Dunkin Donuts use is a uh, what we call a pass by use. So they, they do pull from the adjacent roadways. So visibility is very important for this type of use. Um, so we tried to basically come to a nice, you know, kind of a middle ground between, you know, aesthetically pleasing and then also trying to make sure you know, visibility, uh, you know, you can physically see the building. So uh, we did add a number of trees along the outside from the original revision. I believe was at the request of uh Mr. Cornell. And then um, we are willing to provide money as a tree contribution for additional remaining trees as outlined in his review letter. We are asking for a few different waivers. Mainly regarding um providing landscape islands on the interior area here. Uh, and as you can see, you know, we're not proposing long, basically stretches of parking without, you know, landscaping areas. You know, we're proposing seven spaces, seven spaces, six spaces. So um, you know, we have landscaping all around the outside of, of, of the Dunkin Donuts. So uh, we are requesting some waivers as far as, you know, um I believe there was a requirement for 10% of the parking area to have uh landscape islands. There was a waiver as far as trying to provide landscaping around the entire outside of the building because of the drive through. You really can't do that. Uh, but we are willing to work if, 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 you know, if uh Mr. Cornell has any sort of recommendations as far as adding some, you know, ground cover or any sort of, you know, lower landscaping along the outside of the building. We can work with his office as trying to, you know, put something together that, that works well. So.
I have a question. The area that's next to the two drive, the, the, the drive in window, it's white. You know, the length of the building. You know, off to the right there? Further over?
Further.
The other way. Yeah, keep on going, right?
Right, oh, this area.
Right here. What is that?
That's landscaping. So that's shrubs. Yeah.
Okay.
Show you on the uh, the color rendering. So it's kind of, we do landscape lawn. If, if you want to add some shrubs here, we can add some shrubs. But really we're, we're almost buffering to nothing because it kind of goes into the overall shopping center. Um, you know, my client obviously, you know, is willing to add some landscaping, but you know, where it's just going to be easier to maintain lawn. He'd prefer to do that. Uh, but if, you know, if, if the board feels, we can add some additional landscaping in that area.
And you'll be adding those trees that are there, those seven trees?
Yeah, we have the seven trees right here on the outside. And then we'll contribute for the additional trees.
Thank you.
Uh, so overall, we're adding seven, seven trees. As I mentioned, we're adding 62 evergreen shrubs and we're adding overall 73 shrubs in total. Uh, from a utility perspective, we're going to have a water connection from uh an existing main that's on site, sewer connection to an existing main that's on site. A gas uh connection to a main along Ernston Road. And electric is also along Ernston Road. So uh, most utilities actually probably not even have to go into the road uh just because of where we're located. So I think that's a that's a great uh advantage here. From a stormwater management perspective, we are slightly increasing impervious over uh existing conditions. So in order to mitigate that, uh, we are considered um you know, we're basically have to comply with NJAC 7 colon 8. It's considered a major development. We're proposing an infiltration basin at the uh southwestern corner of the site, which was mentioned earlier. There's going to be a, you know, black metal fence, a jury fence around the outside of the infiltration basin. And then there's going to be guide rail along uh, along the, the base itself. So uh, we, we do meet NJAC 7 colon 8. There were some technical comments from CME regarding the basin, which we will comply with. We'll work with those off, you know, with their office to resolve those comments. And then um, just to get into signage, I know we kind of talked about signage earlier, but it's kind of want to, you know, go over and kind of give you, give the numbers to everyone. Uh, we are, so from a signage perspective, we're going to remove the small monument sign at the intersection. We're proposing one Uh, we are, so from a signage perspective, we're going to remove the small monument sign at the intersection, we're going to be proposing one small. Uh, monument sign for the Dunkin' Donuts, uh, adjacent to the Dunkin' Donuts use, and then we're proposing one shopping center tenant sign. Monument sign for the Dunkin' Donuts is generally fairly small, it's approximately 16 square feet. And the town center sign is approximately, uh, 86 square feet, uh, with an eight-foot clearance. The sign height, uh, the Dunkin' Donuts sign is fairly small, there's only a two foot, you know, basically base to the sign itself. Center sign is, you know, basically consistent with the other shopping center sign in town, about 20 feet in height. And both signs are, are set back five feet. From wall signage, uh, we're proposing, uh, three wall mounted signs, uh, 22.3 square feet. Uh, the Dunkin' sign and the drive-through sign of 8.13 square feet. The south side will have a Dunk, or Saraville Dunkin' sign of 8.69 square feet. And you can see that on the building, if I go to the. See the bill, the architect, I'm not, I'm not going to go into the architecture because the architect's going to go into that, but it just, just so you can see the, the building signage itself. Through the Dunkin', the drive-through, and then we have the Saraville Dunkin'. They're proposing three corners in the building. And the other thing we're proposing, we're proposing four directional signs, uh, those four directional signs are 2.75 square feet. Uh, and that is a variance, it's a slight deviation over what is permitted by ordinance because two square feet is permitted. We're only, you know, you know, 0.75 square feet over, but that's the standard size for Dunkin'. And then the sign height would be 4.83, uh, feet, there's a variance over the two-foot height allowed.
And Mr. Henry, did you mention before that there's going to be two freestanding signs? One that will indicate all the businesses in there, then you'll have a Dunkin' Donuts sign too?
Right, so we're, the, the, I'll go to the, uh, detail of the signage, if you give me one second. Sorry, it's a large file, so it's, 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 keep zooming in and out on me. So the Dunkin' Donuts sign itself, uh, you know, very small, located directly adjacent to kind of the sidewalk. You know, approximately about 10 feet from the sidewalk, you know, uh, very small in nature, just basically directional sign along Ernston. And then the, the overall shopping center sign, uh, would be, you know, similar in, in the design that we have shown our plans right here.
The overall shopping center sign, that's the one that we were talking about at the, the corner of the property, correct?
Right, yeah, at the intersection.
Thank you.
Uh, so overall, just kind of summarize overall the, the, the site engineering testimony, I think overall. Uh, we spent a great deal working with professionals, uh, and we appreciate everyone's help. We've gone back and forth several times and really tried to come up with the best plan that's before you tonight. Uh, we worked extensively with your, uh, police department as well as Mr. Cornell as far as pedestrian safety. And also for traffic safety. I think aesthetically, from a landscaping perspective, we helped really upgrade, uh, the site, especially from where we were originally. Uh, and overall, I think this is a, you know, a good improvement, a good use for the center. Uh, and especially with, you know, what's, what's going on with COVID. Uh, you see these type of uses being, you know, uh, almost every restaurant that I'm doing, whether. You traditionally know it with drive-through or not, uh, you know, we're probably doing. At our office, you know, a, a number of these per week, you know, drive-throughs are, are, are becoming, uh, you know, more of the norm with the COVID era. Uh, it's just basically the, you know, the way most of the restaurants are open to, so. I think overall, there, there is a, there's a, uh, safety aspect improvement, uh, with adding the drive-through. And basically, the, the improvements that we're proposing today are consistent with the overall improvements. Uh, that our client has been doing to the overall center and, uh, really a good upgrade from a landscaping and architectural standpoint.
And just a few cleanup items, uh, we are also on receipt of a March 22nd. Letter from the Middlesex County Planning Board, which indicates that it is approved the site plan application, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and, um, you also had an opportunity to review the board's review letters. Both from CME dated February 24th and the higher rule letter dated February 11th, is that correct?
I, I tried to sprinkle in, you know, rather than answer, you know, go through the each review layer, I tried to sprinkle in responses to most of those. And I think we'll generally, uh, agree to most of the conditions unless otherwise testified to tonight.
Great, thank you. That's all I have.
Do you have a, um, your next witness?
Mr. Chairman, I have a couple of questions before he leaves.
Oh, sure.
Okay, uh, could you just clarify and get on the record the outside and inside, uh. Number of seats for dining and eating. And a question about the generator, is, is it really necessary? Do you have a lot of refrigerated items in the building? That's it.
Yeah, I mean, uh, on, on the Dunkin' Donuts that I'm doing, almost all of them have, have had generators, um, you know, when power, when the power has been going out. You know, they lose basically a lot of their inventory. Um, so, you know, I think financially, you know, if it didn't make sense, they wouldn't be installing it. Um, so I think that's why that's, that's being installed, um, just because of the losses that they've incurred by losing power. Um, from a seat perspective, we're adding, you know, 21 seats total, 14 inside and then seven outside, so we show a little patio area. Uh, with, with a few tables, uh, which I think is, you're going to see more and more, um, you know, in this post-COVID-19 era. At least having some outdoor seating.
And is there any, uh, table service or is it all counter service?
It's all counter service and then just, you know, have the ability to go outside and eat rather than eat inside.
Okay, thank you.
And Mr. Chairman, Carl, um, Mr. Henry, uh, this may be a better question for the traffic engineer, but when you were describing the crosswalks, um, on Ernston Road. You indicated they were high visibility crosswalks. What makes them high visibility?
Like, so I, I believe it's the striping pattern, but I'll let our traffic engineer kind of go into that in detail.
Thank you, sir.
Would you like us to call the next witness?
Yes, you're next to witness, please.
Our next witness is Nick Verderesi, who is our traffic expert.
Good evening, Mr. Verderesi, do you swear your answer? You swear firm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
And, uh, please give us your name, spell your last name.
Nicholas Verderesi, V E R D E R E S E.
Thank you, please continue.
Thank you, Nick. Uh, can you briefly state your education on professional background?
Yes, I have a bachelor's science degree in civil engineering from Rutgers University in 1990. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey, principal of dynamic traffic. Located in 1904 Main Street, Lake Como, New Jersey. I've appeared, uh, at this board. Uh, as well as the planning board, uh, in Saraville.
Except his credentials.
Thank you. Uh, and Nick, you prepared a traffic impact study date May 20th in advance of tonight's hearing, is that correct?
Yes.
If you, if you could go through the findings of your report, please?
Yes, um, so essentially we did, uh, your, your standard traffic study meeting all industry standards. Uh, we took existing traffic counts, uh, those were conducted. Uh, we've been on the site for a little while, so we got those done, uh, in June, June 13th of 2019. Uh, before school was let out, uh, in the area from 7:00 to 9:00 AM and 2:00 to 6:00 PM. Importantly, we did 2:00 to 6:00 because of the high school and middle school just, uh, across the street. Uh, we identified peak, uh, hours of 7:30 to 8:30 in the morning and 5:00 to 6:00 in the evening. And what we did was we identified, uh, future traffic conditions, so we. You, utilizing industry standards, we identify how much traffic the proposed Dunkin' will generate. Uh, part of that traffic is traffic that's already, uh, in the center, so we draw from people using ShopRite. The Vita, uh, daycare, the other uses, so some traffic interacts, uh, with rest uses. Uh, some traffic, as our engineer mentioned earlier, is what they call pass-by traffic, so you're already driving by on Ernston Road. Or Washington Road, passing the site, and you just divert into the property and, uh, utilize the restaurant. And then last is new traffic, so someone that lives or works, uh, maybe a half a mile away or so. And they come from home and they make this their destination, uh, that represents only about. 30% or so of the traffic, uh, for this type of use, uh, in this area, so it's. It's not a big traffic generator as far as bringing a lot of new people to the area. Really draws mostly about two-thirds or so from the existing traffic stream on the adjacent roadways. So that's a plus. Additionally, uh, with Dunkin', Dunkin' having, uh, having their peak. Occur in the morning, so between 7:00 and 10:00 AM is generally the peak of the Dunkin'. The rest, shopping center's peak is, is in the evening. So, um, what happens is in the morning at the existing center, the traffic is about. A one-third of what it is in the evening, so bringing in a Dunkin' doesn't exacerbate. Uh, any traffic conditions you have, because when the traffic is heavy as at the Dunkin', the traffic is lightest, uh, in the rest of the center, so it. Uses up available capacity, uh, for the driveways and for the adjacent intersection. And so they work well together, putting a Dunkin' into the center, specific because the, the main user of the center is ShopRite. Uh, and their peak doesn't, you know, happen until, uh, almost lunchtime and later on. Um, as far as the site, I'll, I'll, I'll clear my screen and pull up the, uh. Rendering that Mr. Henry was using. Uh, this is, uh, zoomed in on A6, so hopefully you're seeing the, uh, site plan rendering right now. Again, a reoriented, the same as what Jim was showing you, North Ernston Road's on the left. North is up and off the page to the bottom, uh, is Washington Road. So the site circulation, uh, Jim talked about, we have a two-way access into the center as well as a one-way egress. Uh, essentially operates in a, uh, counterclockwise direction. Angled parking stalls, 20, uh, it meets your ordinance requirement. It's slightly in excess of what we've been doing for other Dunkins, so we're confident that, uh, 20 will accommodate. Uh, this proposed use. Um, as you see here, we're showing about 10 cars stacked up here, uh, we're probably a little. Uh, a little light in that, uh, there's probably a couple of spaces we can add, so in that area, you probably have 11 to 12. Um, pre-COVID, what we used to see was about seven to nine vehicles, uh, in drive-throughs. Uh, since COVID, that number's gone up, you're all familiar, I'm sure everyone goes to some type of drive-through facility. Um, and one of the facilities down the road, uh, we know, uh, on, uh, Main Street, uh, and Broward and. Um, the queues do extend, um, in that drive-through and sometimes out onto the, the public street. However, that site is, is designed very differently than this site. Uh, the ninth car or so in that stack is already out to the street point, so anything beyond that is queued in the street. Uh, we're showing, say, 10 or 11 in here, just, um, in this first portion of the site. Uh, if need be, they could stack further within the property. Still not even leave the pad site and we'd fit probably 19 or 20 vehicles in the stack. Uh, so we're more than comfortable, uh, that this design, again, this is a current modern design. Uh, that won't be able to accommodate that other facility, uh, I'm going back to, that's a single drive-through lane. Doesn't provide the ability for those 20 to 30% of the people to utilize that, uh, mobile order bypass. And what that's going to do is, um, a lot of times, uh, where there's, uh, a delay is someone ordering and. Placing a large order, someone that's ordering mobile can then bypass, and what happens is the queuing space is empty out. The vehicles are able to bypass the ordering board, uh, and proceed directly into the, uh, into the line. Without essentially creating any additional stack and better, uh, providing better operation for the facility. Uh, information we've gotten from, uh, Dunkin', they only have a, a few, uh, of the mobile bypass. Um, and, uh, some dual order boards where they're getting, uh, 20 to 30% increases, uh, in processing times. So we've seen 20, essentially 20 to 30% reductions in queues, uh, which is a benefit again because of, uh. You know, the current condition we're in, uh, we're seeing queues in excess of, you know, maybe a dozen or so vehicles, uh, at peak times in the morning. Um, as far as, um, the, the, the traffic study, the operation, et cetera, we did analysis. The driveway, uh, there were some, um, in the PMP hour, there were some delays identified, uh, to exit the driveway. Um, so we met with your police department at the recommendation of your TRC committee. Uh, and we proposed some improvements, so it's a combination of pedestrian, uh, and safety improvements as well as capacity improvements. Uh, one that Jim had mentioned was, uh, we're formalizing a separate left and right turn lane exiting the driveway, so that'll help. Uh, for someone that's, uh, waiting to make a left, since the majority of the traffic turns left, someone making a right turn. If they don't line up along the center line in the existing, sometimes they're blocking that person and it extends the queue, so we're going to. We're going to formalize that lane into two lanes. Additionally, we're adding, uh, a crosswalk across the driveway, which, uh, interestingly. For some reason does not exist today, so we're going to add that there. Um, we did do pedestrian counts, uh, during school time, so we did see, uh, during peak hours, 30, 40 pedestrians. Uh, passing by the Dunkin' Donuts, uh, traveling north away from the school in the evening. Uh, and those same ones essentially traveling south, uh, in the morning. Uh, the majority of the pedestrians in the morning are on our side of the road. In the evening, it happens to flip to the other side. Uh, and then some of them will cross here or they continue down and they cross at another location. So what we did was add that crosswalk, uh, just at the top of the page, and I apologize that it, it kind of got washed out here. Uh, there, we are modifying the crosswalk, so currently today, there's what we call a ladder striping. Where it has two parallel lines and then smaller crosshatch in the middle. We are going to, uh, grind that out and put in, as Jim mentioned, high visibility crosswalk, it's called continental. So it has a two-foot wide stripe and then, uh, then a gap and then another two-foot wide stripe. So there are more stripes, they're heavier, uh, so it'll be more apparent to drivers. Uh, that they're crossing the crosswalk. Additionally, uh, in our discussion with the police department. Uh, and these essentially came out of, uh, recommendations, uh, from a study that the police department did back in, uh, March of 2019. Uh, they recommended the same thing, the, the high visibility crosswalk, uh, the pedestrian crossing signs are already there at the driveway. Uh, they had recommended some advanced pedestrian signage and we're showing it here about 300 feet in advance of the crosswalk. Identifying that there's a crosswalk, uh, coming ahead, we also have one in the southbound direction off the page. Uh, and then additionally, uh, we are, um. An ordinance has already been passed, but signage has not been installed, at least as far as the last time I spoke with the police department. Uh, we're going to be adding, uh, some, uh, no parking signage in the area of the crosswalk to keep that area clear. We're going to make that 50 feet long, uh, it's, uh, based on Title 39, it's only required to be 25. But we want to give it a little bit more, I think, a better visibility for pedestrians crossing in that area. Um, as far as pedestrians and how they get here, uh, we looked at a number of different things and, and, you know. If we could change something or maybe add some, some crosswalks and, and sidewalks. Um, and it was determined that the best, uh, scenario, uh, would be, is to keep the crosswalk in the location we have it. Uh, the main reason is the majority of the traffic on North Ernston Road. Turns in and out of the shopping center, so less traffic actually passes the shopping center and continues north than turns in. So what we don't want to do is move all the pedestrians to the area where the volume is higher, to the south of the driveway. We want to keep them on the north side of the driveway. Um, I understand it might not be the comfortable location for everyone to cross. But I'd rather provide the safe location and sign that appropriately. If need be, at the end of the, the sidewalk that comes from the park. If we place some kind of signage, uh, that tries to, you know, help, um, direct people to go. It's about 50 feet north, it, it's not a long distance to travel in that direction.
Hi, can I comment? Because I know I'm the one that brought that up. Uh, I understand what you're trying to say is you, you want them on the other side with their kids and they're not going to do that. If you, if you definitely have some kind of signage. To kind of direct them in any way, shape or form, that would be great, but they're going to cut across exactly where you don't want them to.
Yeah, uh, unfortunately, that, that sidewalk comes out directly in front of our driveway. Um, and it's been there, uh, you can't really move it, you have a parking lot to the south and I think it's wetlands, uh, up to the north there. So that's the location we're stuck with as far as that sidewalk.
Well, I, I'm just bringing up, I know what you, I know what you want, but the reality is just, you know, they're just going to, they're just going to cut straight across.
If we put a crosswalk down here to the south, who knows if they're even going to walk in that, they may just come straight out and walk across at an angle. Um, so what we want to do is at least catch as many of the. we want to do is at least catch as many of the prudent walkers as possible and get them to go to the north side because that's the safest location. Providing an additional crosswalk to the south, I think it's going to start to get a little, a little too confusing maybe with multiple crosswalks and you have cars coming and someone crossing, then they're going to get stuck possibly in the middle of the intersection as they're coming. It's still, in all my discussions with the police department, that was the location that, that was there. That's the one they felt was the proper location for pedestrians. I think truthfully, most pedestrians are going to be walking along our frontage. So they'll just use our sidewalk into the site. I would assume the smaller portion of pedestrians are going to come out of the park and come across. Additionally, you can see just off to the right side of the page here, there are some stop bars with stop pavement markings. Those are additional as requested by the police department. There were some internal conflicts, some incidents that occurred within the center. Those cross aisles are not clearly marked today. So we're adding that at the end of each aisle. There's a good dozen or so of those being added as part of this, this project. Again, the 20-foot aisle, let's meet your ordinance standard. It's an industry standard as well as far as one-way parking. I think we've done a nice job here at mixing in the pedestrian automobile traffic at the center. We provided a couple different crosswalks from the adjacent right away. We've provided sidewalk onsite, crosswalks onsite, proper parking, proper circulation and good access into the internal section of the center as well as made some improvements along Ernst, Ernston Road to help alleviate some previous concerns of the police department.
Thank you, Nick.
You're welcome.
Excuse me. Nick, could you maybe comment on the changing of the exit of the Dunkin' Donuts? They're going to allow a right turn out of the Dunkin' Donuts area. Is that something you can address?
Totally agree with that. I actually thought that was on the plan way back when, but I guess it went in as a one-way. I agree with Jay as to two-way. I don't have any issue with someone exiting that location. It makes all the sense in the world not to have someone traverse the property twice every time they, they enter.
All right, thank you. Any questions?
Yes, Nick, um, pulling out of the exit onto North Ernston Road, it's a kind of dangerous as it is now. I know there were seven crashes there in the last seven months with four injuries and it was discussed about putting a traffic signal there. Is that feasible?
Yeah, so we looked at a traffic signal. Couple reasons not to. One is we looked at what they call a traffic signal warrants. So you review a number of different things, essentially identify if a signal will correct those. As far as the volumes at the intersection, it doesn't rise to the level of a traffic signal lies the intersection. Additionally, the spacing from the existing signal at Washington Road isn't optimal because you're going to have, you know, a stop within, you know, 700 feet or so from that intersection. But essentially, we look at those warrants and we, they didn't rise to the level of meeting any of the vehicular volume warrants at the intersection.
Because we have one right up the road at the mini mall for the same reason. And they're very close to life. Is there any way of putting a pedestrian flashing sign? I know that was brought up too.
Yeah, we looked at that. Um, it's, if you did, you could put one at that crosswalk. I don't know that that's going to do much for the vehicle conflicts and, and some of those crashes you mentioned, but it, you know, it could help, you know, pedestrians. What we're providing is definitely enhanced from what's there now. So we think we're doing enough. But if, you know, if someone felt strongly that, that you would need something additional, we could look into that as well.
I know. I would like to see something, either a traffic signal or the pedestrian light there, flashing warning light, something.
Think when we, when we take our 10-minute break in a little while, we can have some of those discussions and then get back to you.
Okay.
And Mr. Chairman, I have a comment or a question. Can you just discuss the entrance from Washington Road, the additional entrance and why that wasn't feasible? And can the right-hand turn lane that's there now be shared for both into the center and onto Ernston Road?
So I'm switching over. I think this was A2, the aerial exhibit. So on here, you see the word Washington. So the right-turn lane and the left-turn lane essentially end somewhere near the middle of the word Washington in this area. The Department of Transportation, NJDOT, has requirements. They aren't necessarily requirements on a county road, but, you know, they're good guidelines. They don't allow any driveways within a full width left-turn lane or right-turn lane. So anywhere from about the H or I in Washington, they wouldn't permit any driveways in here. The reason being is if someone was slowing down to turn in, you wouldn't know if they were turning at the intersection because it's so close, because it's within the right-turn lane or turning into the site. Secondly, is if someone was exiting the site and they wanted to get to the signal to make a left, there's a queue in here and they're trying to get in the back of the left-turn queue and it's not at the back of it. What happens is they come out of the driveway and block the lane and that's something you want to avoid. So we generally don't provide driveways in left-turn lanes and right-turn lanes into any, any, you know, commercial development.
What about if we back that entrance up to where that D is in road? It's more on the shoulder.
Yeah, so I think Jim was talking about that. So back in this area, there is, it would require about a 25% grade to get down into the parking lot. So that would be in excess of what you would typically find, which would be a maximum, maybe 10 to 12% on a driveway.
Any other questions? Do you have your next witness available?
Yes. Our next witness is Gary Cleish.
Good evening, Mr. Cleish. Please raise your right hand, sir. You swear firm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth? I didn't get a little bit freeze on his camera.
Gary, can you hear us?
He looks frozen.
There we go.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
Let's try it again. Please raise your right hand. You swear firm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I can dial in if that is helpful.
If you could have him dial in or go.
Yeah, I guess we, yeah, we should have him dial in. I don't want you to miss your witness. It's the technology.
I think I just keep getting frozen.
Yeah. Yeah, Gary, if you would, maybe just try dialing in on your telephone and using that for your audio. And that way, if you freeze, at least somebody else could probably put up a screen share of the architectural plans. We'll help you through.
Welcome to.
Actually, you seem to be doing pretty well right now.
Just afraid when I had share the screen, it's going to freeze.
Yeah.
We can share it for you if necessary.
Oh, you know it?
Do you want me to?
Yeah, Mr. Henry, Mr. Cleish, when you dial in pound nine, star nine on your phone so we can see you and then add you into the, into the panelist list.
Do you see him on there, Carl?
No, I don't. If he can hear us. I said, when you dial in with your phone, hit, I keep forgetting where it is. I have to look at it every damn time. Star nine, thank you, Lisa. And that'll raise your hand and we'll be able to see you and transfer you over.
Yeah, he has a mobile number that starts with 201, 280, if that helps you.
Yeah, it's not showing up. Let me give it a second.
Lisa, how many more witnesses do you have tonight?
Yeah, this is it. Just Gary. He really is just going to talk about the exterior look of the building and the, and the signs, which if, if he's stuck for too long, we can have somebody else testify to that. Jim Henry is familiar with the design. And then we just have our planner.
It's frustrating, I know. I don't think I've had a Zoom meeting so far since COVID that we haven't had issues somewhere along the line.
Yeah, I'm going to share my screen, which shows, if that's okay, which shows the architectural exterior elevations that were submitted to the board. And Gary looks somewhat unfrozen right now. Maybe we could try to get through it quickly. All right, Gary, unmute yourself. All right. You have to unmute on the computer now.
Still no luck. If I may suggest maybe Gary just completely disconnect from the meeting, try dialing back in. Maybe it's just the connection itself. In the meantime, Lisa, I hate to steal your architect's thunder, but if you want to have one of your other witnesses go through and explain it, if the board has questions, hopefully the architect's back on there because he's probably more suited to answer details. But I think, again, just normal testimony explaining the finishes and the elevations are kind of self-evident from the photos. So I don't think it's any.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry. I keep, I, I don't have a good connection. Keeps cutting out.
Yeah. Well, you seem to be a little bit better right now. Now I froze again.
Jim Henry, would you mind just briefly talking about the exterior elevations? You're familiar with the designs of Dunkin' Donuts, having been involved as professionals for them in various places. You've, you've reviewed the architectural plans and elevations that were submitted to the board in advance. This is really more factual testimony than is expert testimony as far as architecture. If you could just briefly talk about the design, if you feel comfortable with that?
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Henry.
So the, the top elevation on the elevation prepared by GKNA basically is the facade that would be facing the street, Ernston Road. As you can see, the door is at the, it's going to be at the northwestern corner of the building. That's going to be your main entry point. There's going to be nice long windows along the front, which is going to be where your seating area would be for the inside. And then along the, along the back of the building is going to be kind of where your, your storage and your freezer area is. And that's the area that you see to the, to the right of the sheet on the, on the northern side. And overall, I mean, you're going to see the, the orange band that goes across the front. It's going to be basically cyber cement, cement board along the outside of the building. And then the front, the front area, so I tried to do this as I'm looking at the plants. So it's mainly just fiber cement siding along the outside of the building, you know, with, and then on the back of the building is going to be where you see the Saraville Dunkin'. And then the front of the building is going to be the, the middle right-hand elevation. That's going to be facing the ShopRite building itself. And then on the bottom is the east elevation where you see the two drive-through windows with an overhang over the, the two windows. The HVAC equipment will be on the, on the roof and that will be screened by a parapet. So it won't be visible from the street. And then from a inside, as we mentioned, the number of seats, I think we had 14 seats and seven outside. I don't know if we want to go over the inside, but basically, you know, you're going to have a donut rack and then also going to have, you know, obviously a walk-in freezer in, in the back of the building with, with basically an entry door, the main entry door being on the top left-hand corner of this elevation. And then there will be a, basically a, an area to the storage room on the back of the building.
Jim, in the signs, I think you mentioned in, in your direct testimony, actually, that they, they are in compliance with the, with the Towns Code?
Yes, they are.
Okay. And just as the board can, can see on their own, this is a more modern Dunkin' Donuts design. It's using a various different materials to break up the architectural and visible, visibly differentiate some, some different patterns to break up the facade as well. So I think that pretty much concludes the architectural testimony. If there's any questions, perhaps Gary, you know, that if Jim can't answer them, Gary can, can type them into the chat.
Is there any, is there any questions from the board?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Should we have some shielding of the equipment that is on the roof, especially since Washington Road's a little elevated? You know, you might be able to see that. It might not look very nice. You can, you can look into that to see if it's required.
Yeah, and I think I just, we, we can look at that if it's necessary to shield it, but also as previously testified, there, this, where the Dunkin' is going, it's also depressed compared to where Washington is. So I don't know how visible that would be particularly along with the, the buffer that's existing along the Washington Road.
I noticed an email that Gary said you can supply that.
I can supply?
Well, we can supply revised rendering, just showing like the screening around the HVAC.
Yes, we could provide screening. I don't know if I'm being.
Now we can hear you. Yes, thank you, Gary.
Yes, we could provide some for that HVAC unit.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the, from the board? I just have one question. It's been, you know, just curious, actually. Dunkin' Donuts, they don't bake their donuts in these stores? Was it just one central area that they bring the donuts from to these stores?
Right. They typically have a warehouse location where they're, they're cooking and then they bring them to the stores each morning fresh.
And that, i- is that a constant during the course of the day or just like in the morning and you have enough there for the day?
Just in the morning, enough there for the day. There, there are some locations that cook, but this location will, will not cook. So.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. If you would like me to move on to my next witness?
Please.
Okay. Our next is Justin Arcilio, who is our professional planner and last witness.
You swear firm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Please give us your name. Thank you. Please give us your name, spell your last name.
Yes, my name is Justin Arciello, and that is A U C I E L L O.
Thank you. Please continue.
Justin, your education and professional background, please?
Absolutely. I have a master's degree in, in city regional planning from Rutgers University that was granted in, in 2005. I've been a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey since 2008. My planning career has really, you know, spanned the gamut on, on the public and the private side. Master planning, redevelopment. I have testified in front of, of planning and zoning boards in, in more than 150 communities.
We'll accept your congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank, thank you, sir.
Justin, could you please explain to the board what you did in advance at tonight's hearing to prepare for your testimony?
Yes, absolutely. So, so I've reviewed the, the project plans. I've reviewed the site and the site, you know, orientation, the, the surrounding area, the layout, your master plan and, and the zoning ordinance.
And Justin, if you could, you heard that we are requesting a use variance for the drive-through component and several other bulk type variances, including the signage. If you wouldn't mind going into your planning proofs and discussing both the positive and negative criteria.
Sure, absolutely. So as the board is, is well aware, we do require a D1 use variance. However, as our, our lawyer, attorney had, had stated earlier, Lisa had stated earlier, the, the use variance is solely for the, the drive-through aspect and not the, the Dunkin' Donuts itself. The, the justifications or the proofs that are required for a, a use variance or a, you know, special use and special reasons, use variance fall under the, the D1 proofs for, for Medici. And there's a four-pronged test. The first is particular suitability. What is it that makes this site particularly suited for this use? The second is the, the special reasons. What are the purposes of the municipal land use law? Or the, the purposes of zoning that this proposal advances? The third is, is the negative criteria. It's a showing that whether or not the variances can be granted without a substantial detriment to the public good. Fourthly, reconciliation and also whether or not the proposal will substantially impair the intent of the, the master plan, the zoning ordinance and the zone plan. Relative to the particular suitability of this site for, for the drive-through, you've heard extensive testimony relative to the site layout, the circulation on the site and also the, the design of the site. And I think importantly as well, you know, this is a, a pad site in a, you know, overall shopping center. You know, certainly, a, a, as it relates to, to the drive-through, you've heard testimony from both the design engineer and the, and the traffic engineer that the site is of sufficient size to accommodate the drive-through. And I think importantly as well, the site location is along two, two county roadways. That lends it quite well, as you heard from our, our traffic engineer, for a, a pass-by traffic type of use, where this is a type of use that relies on people that, that are already on the, the roadway network. So being along two county roadways and having proper and easy access onto the site certainly makes it suitable for the use. I think another important point that you had earlier from, from Mr. Henry, there's a grade change, a, a differential, if you will, from, from Washington Road downward to the pad site where the Dunkin' Donuts is proposed. As Mr. Henry had testified, that's approximately a 20 feet grade change from the southeast corner of the site to the southwest corner of the site. Again, I, I feel that from the suitability of the Dunkin' Donuts and also, you know, for the drive-through, that helps to, to obscure this use from, from the residences on the other side of, of Washington Road. So I think for those three reasons, that's substantial evidence of, of site suitability for this use. Relative to, to the special reasons or the positive criteria, I certainly, it's, it's my opinion that this application advances multiple purposes of zoning. And I'll just, just go through them rather quickly. Criteria G, which speaks to sufficient space. I feel that certainly as I had testified for the suitability, there's sufficient space on the site to accommodate not only the Dunkin' Donuts, which is permitted, but also the drive-through. And that, and that's also, you know, evidenced by the lack of, 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 of dimensional variances that are related to, to the structure and the, the drive-through itself. Criteria H, which speaks to the free flow of traffic and, and criteria A, which speaks to the, the general welfare. As Mr. Vitterese had testified, this is a, a pass-by type of use where the traffic's already on the, the, the roadway, you know, you know, network generally. And I think importantly as well, Mr. Vetterese and Mr. Henry both testified to the, the substantial improvements on the, the, the site, you know, circulation design and those various changes from the, the current condition to accommodate this use. Certainly, I would also say, actually, I'll, I'll wait for this when I get into the, the bulk variances. I also think the criteria I, desirable visual environment. You, you just saw the, the rendering of the structure and Mr. Henry had also testified earlier, you know, relative to the, the materials that are proposed on this, on, on, on the building and also the, the landscaping that's proposed on the site. Also, the, the buffer area on, on North Ernston Roadway. And I, I think importantly as well, relative to the, the site's, you know, orientation to Washington Road, there's gonna be a, a substantial, you know, lawn area as well. So certainly, you know, the, the visual environment and, and the, the curb appeal will, will be enhanced with this use. I also think, you know, given obviously the, the ongoing pandemic and as Mr. Henry had testified extensively about his experience, his recent experience with designing uses to accommodate, you know, the need to encourage more, you know, outdoor activity or, or quick, you know, you know, in and out activity that wasn't typically, you know, associated with uses prior to, to the, you know, pandemic. I certainly feel that the, the drive-through affords a certain level of benefit to the, the general welfare, you know, you know, as well, you know, just to ensure that, that there is, you know, the, the public has, you know, sufficient use of, you know, trying to avoid going, going inside the store. So those are the special reasons. Relative to the negative criteria, that's a showing of, of whether or not the, the use variance will have a substantial detriment to the public good. And can you still hear me and see me? Because I seem to have lost the, the incoming feed on my end.
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, thank you. Um, you know, you know, certainly, you know, given the, the location of this use, you know, there are, you know, none of the variances relate to the, the building setbacks or, or, or the coverage or the height. So number one, from, from the negative criteria standpoint, this is a use that, that was designed properly on this site, you know, on this, this pad site. So certainly I don't see the overall, you know, design leading to a, a substantial detriment to the public good. I measured using Google Maps, the, the distance from the improvement area for the pad site to the nearest residential property at the corner of, of Washington and, and Ernston Road. It's approximately 300 feet. As I had previously testified, and I, I believe as Mr. Henry had previously testified, there is that differential from, from Washington Road down to the site, the, the grade change. Certainly, that helps to, to obscure the, the views of the site from that residential area. In addition, the, the landscaping that's proposed on the site and the, the lawn area, you know, towards the, the Washington Road area is another factor which, which helps to limit any detriments or substantial detriments from this use. And Mr. Henry had also testified that the, the attenuation on the, on the menu board, that adjusts to the, the, the ambient sound. The menu board and, or the speaker, if you will, will be compliant with, with noise requirements. And again, I, I, you know, I think this is a, you know, use ultimately, you know, that's, that's probably for this location. Relative to the impact on, on the zone plan and, and the zoning ordinance, again, the, the Dunkin' Donuts is permitted. It's the drive-through that's not permitted. However, I don't see the, the drive-through leading to a major, you know, fracture of the, of the zone plan. Relative to reconciliation of, of the omission of this use, you know, from, from the zoning ordinance in the zone, I certainly, you know, feel that it's, it's my understanding that, that, that drive-throughs are not permitted in any zone in, in Saraville. But I believe i- if there is any zone or any location where it's well-suited, it's at, you know, this location. Relative to the, the master plan, you know, certainly there, there are purposes of the, the economics or the commercial vitality of the municipality. Certainly, you know, this is a use that will, will, you know, be, be proper and, and consistent, you know, with the master plan. With that, that concludes the, the testimony, the planning testimony.
Thank you, Justin.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have another witness, Lisa?
No, Justin was our last witness. That concludes our affirmative testimony.
I have just one question for Nick Verdis. Regards to the traffic study that you did. Now, there's another Dunkin' Donuts right down the street. Have, was there any kind of analysis done as to how much business you might be taking away from that particular Dunkin' Donuts?
There was, there was nothing done as far as exact numbers of what we anticipated for this one, but we definitely anticipate cannibalizing the portion of that. That would be, I guess, we're kind of south and west of that site. So yeah, we do anticipate especially commuters that utilize Ernston or Washington to get to the Garden State Parkway. We anticipate picking those up at this site.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Lisa, you said that you're done with your testimony?
That's correct.
Any other questions from the, from the board for any of their panelists?
Mr. Chairman, may I? No, by all means, board members first.
Because we have another Dunkin' Donuts up the road, is there any proximity protection at Dunkin' Donuts enforces or is that, that they don't anymore?
It's the same franchisee, so.
Okay.
John?
Yeah, um, so I have a couple of questions. Possibly for both Nick and Justin, depending on who wants to address it. The, related to the freestanding sign at Washington Road, was there consideration of the size of that sign relative to the, the sightlines, relative to the speed limit along Washington Road? What, what drove the decision to make the sign the size that's proposed?
I think that'll probably be me and Jim Henry, but I'll, I'll give you a little bit. As far as the panels, so we wanted to ensure at least a certain letter height. What we're showing is probably an eight to 10 inch letter. Typically for these speed limits, we'd want maybe 10 to 15 inches or so. So we're on the low end of the letter height size. We want to ensure we had enough panels to cover, you know, the, the number of tenants in the center. So that's why you see a number of panels in there, a number of larger ones. It's likely that a lot of the tenants will take two to get that larger letter height as well. But as far as the height of the sign, I can give you the quick of it and Jim will, Jim probably knows a little better because he knows the grading. But the bottom portion of that sign is essentially below the roadway. So a lot of the sign, and we had to put it up on those stilts essentially to get it above the grade change, above the bushes and the guide rail to kind of get it above that. But I think Jim might be able to go into that a little more detail.
Yeah, the, the reason we raised it up, it's, it's, I think it's raised, we have the exact numbers here.
But it was eight, it might be eight feet, I think, from the bottom of the sign to the ground.
Eight feet. The reason it's eight feet high is obviously, same thing Nick said. Basically, the, the grading and then also, I know, you know, when we talked to the board's professionals, that landscaping that's out towards the road is fairly mature. So we wanted to make sure that we, you know, were treated appropriately and we didn't impact it. So we wanted to raise the sign above that existing landscaping and, and not, not impact the trees that were out there. And then addition, obviously, as you're coming down Washington, you know, you're, you're pretty high and like, like we said, you're probably 20 feet higher. You know, as you get towards the intersection, you have the shrubs you have to look over. So we want to make sure the visibility is there so the cars can make the safe determination whether or not to make the right on, on the Ernston Road. You know, if it was lower, we'd have an issue from a visibility standpoint, being that it would be hidden by the existing landscaping. So the, that's where we ended up as far as the, the height. And then as Nick said, the number of panels, you know, basically we're anticipating the, you know, obviously the larger tenants shop rate, retro fitness to take, you know, possibly, you know, maybe two panels, but you know, we're generally trying to give, you know, as much signage to the, you know, the, the major tenants within the shopping center.
Jim, if I could ask you a question too, if I could follow up in front of John here. Do you need that sign? You know, for the character of the residential area there, those types of signs look like something you see along Route nine to make sure you turn into the right strip mall, because you have so many strip malls along major highway. You know, this is more or less a residential area and keep the character. You know, you have a tall sign, what was it, 21 feet high? Is that something that you, you really need or could you live without it?
It, it's really vital, especially in the current retail market. I mean, you can see the number of vacancies that are out there. There's a lot of businesses going out, you know, basically the visibility. A lot of these national brands really will make, you know, decide whether to take the, take the location based on signage. So it's really critical to the, the viability of the center and making sure that, you know, the, the branding of the center, you know, stays, you know, it basically we're able to fill the vacancies. The other thing, just to point out, I know that was, I think there was a comment in the, it was a planner's review letter about that. You know, this, this type of sign with the amount of tents that are there, as Nick had mentioned, that basically the height of the, the logos are not gonna be visible. If, if you don't have that much signage, I mean, you know, like on a, on a gas station site, we do all the time. You know, we're usually around 100 to 150 square feet and we're kind of, we're asking for under 100 here for this many tenants. So, you know, while I, I realize it's a larger than typical sign, I think with the number of tenants we have proposed, I think it's, you know, fits in well. And also, you know, basically located as far away from the residential uses as possible. It's really pulled away towards the intersection. You know, and, and then as we mentioned, the, the grade differential is really gonna screen the sign itself. One other thing to mention, it kind of, I kind of panned around on Google to find out if there was any other signs locally. And the, the Family Dollar Walgreens Center, you know, has a sign very similar to this, very similar in height, which is, you know, the other kind of, you know, shopping center locally. And it has a very similar sign and it's much more visible. I mean, this, the, the shopping center itself, I mean, you know, all of you live in the neighborhood. I mean, the closest part of the shopping center is 800 feet away. But some, some, some parts of the shopping center, you're almost looking at 1,200 feet away from the intersection. So, so the sign, I, I honestly can't believe that the, the shopping center has gone this long without having a sign at the signal, because you, you really don't know what's in that shopping center from the intersection. And anyone passing by really has no idea, you know, what businesses are in there.
And what about the? What about the position of the sign? Did I see that it was like three feet from the, from your property line?
I believe so, I'll check that. Five feet back, it's got a little, let me share my screen real quick so someone else.
Yeah, to follow up on my question, could you move it back to 20 feet?
So we're trying to put it in a nice location where it's visible, and we're not touching the existing vegetation. I think I could talk to our client about probably moving it down and maybe cutting out some of the existing vegetation to make sure it's visible. So we could shift it back a little bit. It just might require some modification to the existing vegetation.
If you can make the sign smaller, that'd be great. You know, always change the landscaping.
Yeah, see, the sign size, I don't know if there's, you know, I think, you know, we'd have to talk to our client about, I mean, 20, even 20 feet away from that is, you know, you're probably already looking at 20 feet from the, from the street, you know, even though, because you can see there's a little bit of a bump out with the, with the, with the property line at the intersection there. You know, for instance, like the Shell sign is right here. You can see it on this. You know, it's much further away from the street than the Shell sign. And it's, you know, it's probably, you know, it looks big on the rendering, but it's, you know, like I said, it's under 100 square feet. So this is not like a substantial sign that we're proposing.
I mean, I'll be honest with you, I could do without the sign.
Okay, I mean.
What about, it's on a couple of, I'll use the word pillars. Can you lower them? I know you were talking about you have to have the right height, but can you lower the sign down to closer to the, to the ground?
So I'm just going to show the photo so everyone can kind of understand. Like, so if you're on Washington, this sign isn't going to look high in the sun, high up. Because Washington is almost going to be at grade with the sign. You know, if we're talking, we're basically, look, we're drawing a straight line directly down. That's why it's eight feet in the air. But, I mean, you're going to be able to see in this. So I'm referencing Exhibit A13. So this sign essentially is going to go in this area, kind of between the two bushes here. So as you're pulling down Washington, the sign is going to be, you know, approximately, I would say about this high. So it's just going to be just above these shrubs to allow for visibility in both directions. And it's going to be perpendicular to Washington. So the houses across Washington, you know, directly across, aren't going to be looking at it. It's going to be primarily directed at the cars on Washington.
Can you, by some chance, I don't know if you could do this, how tall are those trees, do you know? Just trying to get a feel for how, where that sign would be within that grouping there. I, yeah, I say, question I.
Yeah, I mean, you know, I would say this is about like approximately four feet. So my guess is, can you see my cursor?
Yes.
So I'd say roughly that's going to be the bottom of the sign, approximately.
Right.
So it's just going to be above the shrubs. That's why we kind of landed on the eight feet. So it's above this shrub area, and that shrub area continues along Washington.
Will the sign be higher than those trees?
No, definitely not. Those trees are probably 20, 30 feet high.
And you said.
Your signs.
My sign's right around 20. So, I mean, I, I don't, if this is eight, you know, this is roughly eight feet, you're probably looking at, you know, a sign that's maybe at maximum elevation, roughly where my cursor is here.
Yeah.
Is the sign.
I'm sorry.
Is the sign going to be lit?
It's going to be illuminated while shop rite's open, so it will be shut off during overnight.
And is it internal lights or external lighting, reflective or internal?
We're showing is internal. For this large of a sign, doing external is more difficult. You know, it definitely, definitely makes it difficult to see it. And then just illuminating that large of a sign properly with the small lettering becomes problematic.
Do we need to illuminate it at all?
Yeah, I mean, during nighttime hours, we'd have, you know, for safety reasons, I think it would make sense to, and during winter, like, you know, when it gets dark at 5 o'clock, I think it would make sense to have some illumination. I mean, we could talk to our client about turning off at a certain hour if that's a concern, you know, and discuss, you know, what he'd be wanting to work with, so.
But does the illumination, does that prevent any flashover? Or is it brighter or less bright than the external floodlight type of lighting?
Well, the floodlights typically have a lot more spillover, just because they're kind of like a, you know, kind of a, almost think of it as like a shotgun. Whereas the internal illumination, usually they're LED, and they do adjust based on the illumination outside. So the illumination inside the sign can be controlled as far as how much illumination there is.
John, I jumped on your question before, yeah, any other concerns?
I just had a couple, couple more things to touch on. You guys picked up on most of it, though, with the follow-ups. With, do you know how many tenants there are in the, in the shopping center or potential tenants there are?
John, so we have, we also have the shopping center owner on this call, the Zoom, who's available to testify. It really is his very strong desire to have this freestanding sign due to the need to identify the retailers within the shopping center so he doesn't lose additional tenants and the shopping center becomes, you know, somewhat vacant. If you would like him to testify to that need and what he's experienced with respect to leasing up the center, happy to do that. I'm sure he could also answer the question approximately how many tenants are located within the center.
If you could have him do that, I'd appreciate it, get a better feel for it.
Mike, if you could unmute yourself and show yourself on the camera.
I'm here.
Thank you.
Good evening, sir. You swear in, please raise your right hand. You swear a firm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Please give us your name and spell your last name.
George Michael Gartenberg, G-A-R-T-E-N-B-E-R-G.
Thank you, please continue.
Mike, as I stated, you are the owner of the Saraville Shopping Center Plaza, is that correct? Or representative by the owner?
Yes.
Okay. So you heard the comments and questions that have been posed by the, by the board. If you could just discuss the need that you feel is appropriate here for this freestanding sign in order to lease up the space within the center.
Sure, and I thank you for your time for the board. You know, this, this site, it's about 180,000 square foot shopping center. We are certainly well anchored with a shop right, but we do have a fair number of vacancies. The tenants that are there, the smaller tenants, even more notably, the restaurants, have always expressed a desire to get some visibility to the road. You know, they're set back very far. Recently, we just lost the pizza, the pizzeria that was in there just went out. The other two restaurants in there are struggling at best. Some of the larger name tenants are certainly doing okay. But everybody, even including the shop right, has always complained, you know, that they don't have any presence along Washington or Ernston. And giving us the multi-tenant pylon sign would certainly go a long way in helping those tenants survive. As you can see, you know, we have a number of vacancies over there. We've had tenants that were interested, and the fact that we didn't have a pylon, you know, they've sought other places to go. So we feel it's, it's always been a detriment to us. We, you know, we've certainly operated as best as we could. But in this day and age, I think, you know, having signage is very paramount to operating a successful shopping center.
Thank you, Mike.
And how many tenants do you currently have there now or space for?
You know, typically, a shopping center pylon's not going to be able to house every single tenant, because then it's just going to make the panels too small to sit. But we're going to try to accommodate as many as we can. I would say we're probably about 15, 16 tenants in there right now.
And room for how many more? First, I mean, I guess you could always break the space up, but.
You know, it also depends, you know, we're showing shop right, you know, with a smaller panel probably than what they would like. But, but, you know, we just kind of put that together as an exhibit. But we would have to see what's the best way to kind of divvy that up. But, but, you know, I'm going to be honest to say that not every tenant might have a panel on that pylon sign.
Thank you.
Can I ask you a quick question? If this has been an ongoing issue for years, why wait till now? Why not do it 10 years ago, 20 years ago?
You know, we had been in discussion with the shop right over whether or not to do that. And, you know, for whatever reason, it just kept getting put off. But, you know, we, you know, with everything that's going on with, with the economy and COVID, and, you know, we just felt that now was certainly the right time to bring this to the forefront. And with the application for the Dunkin' Donuts, now, like I said, I thought it was the best time to put this forward.
And I'm sure, Mike, with the advent of Amazon and other big box real, other types of e-commerce where there's delivery, it's taking away from the actual retail users and the need to go into a store, which is probably also hurting the situation. Is that correct?
Sure, I mean, you know, you know, all you need to do is read the newspapers and, you know, you see the bankruptcies are, are one after the other. Bricks in water retail is challenging right now. And, you know, we just went through a very challenging year last year. I will, I will be honest to tell you that a fair number of tenants in that shopping center are on life support. And they need visibility to the general public. And this would certainly go a long way to help them out.
Thank you. John, do you have any other, John Barry, you have any more questions? Did they cover everything that you had in your report?
Yeah, I think, I think my report was covered. I do, one more follow-up question. Mr. Gartenberg or any of the design professionals, did you look at other smaller signage options? Or was this really the only design that was considered?
You know, we took basically what we've used at, used at another shopping center and scaled it down, knowing that this was not on Route 9, and tried to make it fit into the character of the community over there. We tried to put a very tasteful design together. But at the end of the day, you know, it's a 180,000 square foot shopping center. We have a major anchor tenant in there. We have, you know, a fair amount of smaller tenants. So we're, you know, we're trying to bridge, you know, between, you know, what we truly need and what, you know, what you would accept as a board. And we're trying to, to hopefully, you know, make something that you would see as a plus.
Thank you.
Jay, did they cover all of your issues that you had in your report?
Mr. Chairman, they did. Let me just comment, this application has come a long way since they first presented to the board sometime last year. We had a number of onsite circulation concerns, which they addressed. We had some issues with pedestrian safety. They did meet with the police department. They attempted to address all the police department's concerns. So they have addressed the majority of the items. The items that remain in the report, they've indicated they would address as a condition if the board acts favorably. So I would say, yes, they have addressed or they will address any issues that we have.
Thank you. Any questions from the board members to any of their professionals? Here and then, I'd like to open it up to the public. Joan, do you know if there's anybody there?
Yeah, and again, for members of the public, if you're using the website, you're viewing us on here next to your name or your telephone number, there's a way you can raise your hand to be noticed and we'll call on you. And you can ask comments or make questions on the application. If you're on your telephone only, press star nine, which is the raise hand feature there, and we can recognize you as well. Not seeing any members of the public. Again, raise your hand on the line or star nine on your telephone.
Joan, do you see anybody or?
No, I do not.
Okay, make a motion to close it to public? Do we, do I need a second on that or?
I can do that.
Lisa, would you like to, I guess, summarize and?
Sorry, just very briefly, there was extensive testimony given this evening while we are seeking a use variance. It is really for the drive-through component of the application. For all the reasons stating, we believe that this is an appropriate use at this particular location, given the topography of the site, the shielding of the drive-through primarily, which is not visible from either of the road frontages. It's oriented towards the interior of the site. Also, it gives some sort of benefit to the public health and safety at this point due to the COVID concerns. And I'm sure in the future, people distancing themselves and wanting to, to maintain a distance, a safe distance from others for how long this goes on with respect to the other variances that have been requested, in particular, with respect to the two monument signs that have been requested. You just heard from the property owner that he believes that this is necessary for the vitality of the overall shopping center. While this might be a high, a tall sign, it's tall because of the topography, the need to provide some visibility to the tenants within the center itself. And there are other design techniques that we have implemented here, such as landscaping to, to minimize the negative impact that any of these variances could have on the general public. So for the reasons stated at length this evening, we would request that the board look favorably upon this application. And we thank you for your time. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Yeah, I think you did a nice presentation. You went through all the concerns that we had and the traffic concerns, the pedestrian concerns, and it seems as if you, you did the best you could. And nothing's going to be perfect in that, that arena. But I think through the discussions we had, you did a nice presentation. And I'll put it to the board, what is your desire on this application?
Mr. Chairman, if we may, just to be on the safe side, I know Mr. Esposito has been listening in and on the chat feature asking questions. So I want to make sure Mr. Board Member Esposito doesn't have any further questions before we proceed to a vote.
Okay.
So Anthony, if we just, on the chat feature, let us know, no questions? Or if you have any, just to be on the safe side.
Also, Carl and everyone, I think Phil Emma is stuck in the attendees and was asking. Okay, Derek's coming back in. There we go, got him.
Phil, did you have any questions or Tony?
Not seeing any.
Concerns with the sign and the size of it. I'm good.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, can you just let the applicant know how many board members there are? Because I believe they need five votes, is that true?
Yeah, we have full seven. And just for the record, Board Member Esposito indicates he has no questions.
Okay.
Yeah, there are seven members present. What's your desire in this application?
We would like you to proceed to a vote, thank you.
Bob, did you say something? I didn't hear you. Still can't hear you. Can't hear you.
Maybe it's the headset?
Yeah, it could be.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, I make a motion, we approve the application. Okay. I make a motion, we approve the application. Is there a second?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Foley, I apologize for interrupting. The only open issue that we had would, was, um, whether we wanted the applicant to install lighting on the sidewalk that's in front of the Dunkin' Donuts. There was a mention of possibly Ballard lights or not, and, um, we didn't come to a conclusion on that.
Mr. Chairman, that was a, that was an issue that I, that I had raised. Um, I think that some Ballard lights might be appropriate, but we don't know for sure the extent of the street lighting in that. So if I, it may be appropriate to, um, as a condition of approval, have the applicant revisit that with Jay's office to make sure that, um, all parties are satisfied with the, with the lighting level for safety along that sidewalk.
We can agree to that, John.
Okay, then I think all open issues are resolved.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Uh, Foley.
Mr. Foley, um.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second the motion.
Tom, you second it?
I do, yes.
Joan, can we have a vote, please?
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. Kaczynski?
Yes.
Mr. Savelli?
Yes.
Mr. Emma?
Yes.
Mr. Esposito?
He said yes.
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Foley?
Yes.
Ms. Cow? Sherry?
Sherry, are you still on the, on the phone?
Um, yeah, Chairman, I don't see her listed.
Okay. So right now we have six yeses?
And.
Yes.
Oh, there was Sherry. She should have said yes. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Again, we appreciate your time this evening.
Thank you. Good luck to you.
Okay. Thank you. Have a good night.
All right, um, continuing. Did everybody have a chance to look at the minutes?
Yes.
Uh, make a motion to approve the minutes?
Back up.
Okay, um, and is there any open business that we need to look at at this time, Carl or?
Uh, yes, we have, um, one resolution to adopt from the last meeting. And of course my computer just froze, um.
Five Christopher Street.
Yeah, what, what was the name of the applicant, Joan?
Uh, Stephen and Alicia Kazolos.
Kazolos, thank you. So we need to adopt that resolution.
Make a motion to adopt it?
Back up.
Roll call.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. Kaczynski?
Yes.
Mr. Savelli?
Yes.
Mr. Esposito?
He says yes.
Ms. Cow?
Yes.
Hey, is that it? Is any comments from the, um, members at all? No, hey, John, I thought that was a really good write-up you did on this thing.
Oh, thank you.
It was, it was really helpful and pointed out a lot of stuff. That, that was, that was good.
Thanks.
All right. Jay's, your, yours was good too. But I like, I like John's perspective. He takes it a little bit deeper. So that was cool.
Hey Jay, are there any of those crosswalks that they're going to put there in town anywhere else?
The high visibility ones? I'm not sure about that.
I'm not sure I ever saw one. That's why I was wondering.
Yeah, I don't know that you have those here.
Okay, um, any other comments? Make a motion to adjourn?
Back up.
Second. All right. We'll see you.
Good job, Bill.
See you in a month. Take care.
Take care, everybody.
Stay safe.
Bye bye.
Bye.
Bye.